I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can I start with a roll call?
Mary Seminera.
James Meyer.
Aziz Essen.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, right up front, I'm going to tell you that there's two changes to the agenda. Number one, we will not be opening public hearing number five, which is the appeal for Placido Kiernan regarding the definition of retail and service businesses. The applicant once again did not post their sign as they were required to do. When we get to that, we will take some action related to that, but we're not going to open that public hearing, so there will be no public comment on that. And given some of the items that are on our agenda, I'm going to ask the board to go into executive session at the end of the meeting for some discussion with our attorney relative to some of the items that are on our agenda. So we'll add that to the end of our agenda so that we're not holding anybody up or keeping anybody here. So I think we need to have some discussion and give some direction to our attorney on some of these matters. So we do have, our upcoming meetings are going to be Tuesday, September 26th and October 24th. The way the meetings run, for those of you who are new, because I do see a lot of new faces, and I knew we had a lot of new applications this month, the first part of our agenda are public hearings, and that's, those are applications that the board has seen before, so we've had an opportunity to review them, but now we want to hear from neighbors if there's any concerns or anything about the properties that you might be aware of, that you think we should be aware of as we consider the applications that are before us. Once we're done with the public hearings, then we go on to the reviews, which are generally applications that, for the most part, we're seeing for the first or second time, and we're trying to figure out exactly what applicants are trying to do, why they're trying to do it, why things are as they are. So the second part of the meeting is really reviews, and it's just more of a discussion back and forth with the applicant. So we do have one set of minutes to approve, so I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on July 25th with the few amendments that I suggested in them.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Let me see. Okay. All right, and so with that said, item number one, we have a decision on Appeal 3804 DePaulo. The statement DePaulo was requesting an 80-foot front line variance for a proposed 7,200-square foot building at 237 Route 216, Stormville pursuant to Section 194-Jash 123. This is an application that the board's already reviewed, already had public comments on, but the applicant is also before the planning board, and at our last meeting, we requested from the applicant an extension on the board's time limit to issue a decision. We generally have 62 days because the, this board jointly with the planning board submitted or made a submission to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to have them consider or reconsider allowing the applicant to push the building back into the buffer, and we haven't heard anything from them yet. So we do have in writing a letter of extension from the applicant that gives us an unlimited amount of time to make our decision, so we will not be issuing a decision this evening related to item number one. So item number two is an adjourned public hearing. Appeal 3830 Benedict, Christine and Maureen Benedict, 67 Fishkill Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a special permit for an accessory professional office in order to have a yoga studio in their detached barn pursuant to Section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, good evening. All right, so last time that we met, we had reviewed your new plans that showed no longer having a driveway access off of Grove.
Correct.
Grove Street, Grove Road, sorry.
Court.
Grove Court, thank you. I knew it wasn't sounding right. And so you were extending your, the driveway that you had to the parking area that you were proposing, and one of the things that we noticed was that it appeared that part of it was in a floodplain. So we did have the engineering department review it, and it, from their assessment, it doesn't appear that any of it's in a floodplain. So it appears that on that issue, if it had been, you would have needed a floodplain development permit, not necessarily a huge deal, but just something else to consider, which obviously, to the extent that we can minimize anything. We also did have some discussion at our town attorney's guidance about whether there still remains an issue or not about an accessory use being in an accessory building or not. I can't say, Tom, that we came to any conclusions related to that, but, you know, we certainly had a little bit more discussion about it. So again, I think that's one of the things we need to have some discussion with you relative about. So are there any other questions regarding the Benedict application at this point?
Yeah, I have, I actually went back, you know, one of the things that I had mentioned, I had done several site visits, and my understanding initially was that the opening or the entrance was going to be on Grove Court, and that was kind of acceptable to me, but I guess the rest of the members feel that that's not the, you know, I mean, they basically felt, you know, the opinion for the rest of the folks was that maybe that we need to bring it from Cary Road, or maybe you suggested to bring it from Cary Road. One of the problems that I see at Cary Road entrance is that the stop sign is only maybe half a car length from your driveway, and you're going to have maybe eight or 10 cars on an average, on a daily basis, entering and exiting your driveway. And if somebody is parked, comes to a stop sign on Cary Road at the stop sign, you will not be able to enter or exit, or if you're trying to turn into your driveway, you will not be able to enter or exit. And I also saw that there were a bunch of fender benders in that general area because I saw some debris, plastic pieces on the intersection of Cary Road and Fishkill Hook Road, so that's another issue that I wanted to bring it to the attention of the board and to the public, that, you know, especially because now it has gone from a few visitors to, for this yoga studio to, you know, full-fledged classes in the morning, afternoon, and evening, different hours, maybe on the weekend, long-term. So that's something that I think the board should also look at, at the stop sign that is just maybe half a car length from the entrance of your driveway, and it's a very, very, I mean, that's an issue that, that I think, you know, the board needs to consider. I mean, that's an issue that I was concerned about also. The traffic issue, the plastic pieces, some fender vendors, so that's one of the things I wanted to bring to the attention of the board.
Before we go any further, you can keep me on track here. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I thought we did.
You did. You did.
Oh, thank you. All right, because I didn't write it down, sorry. Thank you, sorry. Okay. All right, so you're raising the issue of the traffic.
Okay, yeah, so that was one of the ones that came up.
And just so you're for information, it was the neighbors that brought to our attention the issue of not wanting the access on Grove Court.
Oh, okay.
So the board has agreed.
Multiple neighbors came, you know, spoke to this board from that.
Oh, okay.
They responded to the neighbors, which was nice.
Okay, okay.
I think their preference actually would have been to keep that access on Grove Court, but we did ask them to look at it.
Okay, well, that creates another problem.
We don't really ever have any problem getting in and out of the driveway. There's not a lot of traffic on Cary Road.
Well, there are these semi, you know, what do you call, 18-wheelers are constantly going on Cary Road from the soil mining operation that's kind of behind in your neighborhood, so there are a lot of 18-wheelers going out throughout the day.
Okay, fender benders, I can't comment on. I mean, I live there, I work from home, I don't see a lot of them. I'd have to talk to the police department, see what reports are, but there really are not. I understand your concern. It is close to the, to the stop sign, but as far as fender benders go, I really don't believe that there's too many there.
We have lived there 19 years.
Okay.
And as Ms. Drummond said, our preference was originally to have it on Grove Court, but to accommodate our neighbors who don't want the excess traffic, we're happy to move it into our existing driveway.
Okay.
Any other comments or concerns from board members? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the request from Christopher and Maureen Benedict, 67 Fishkill Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a special permit for an accessory professional office in order to have a yoga studio in their detached barn?
I do have one comment before, if I may, just to follow up from a question that you had at the last meeting.
Sure.
You had asked about the different sizes of the parking spaces and so forth in the lot.
Right.
We sent an email on the 14th, I think, did you get that, just to see it?
Yeah.
Because we did sketch it out. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you got the, the size and shape of the spaces, the eight spaces and so forth, so that you were comfortable with that.
Pam, that's part in the file now?
Correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure you were comfortable with the size and the shape of the space.
Yeah, I mean.
Yes, thank you.
The information's there.
Thank you.
So anybody wish to speak regarding this matter? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing and reserve decision?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we will likely have a decision at the next meeting, but, you know, again, as I said, we have to have some conversation with our attorney.
Sure.
Okay?
Please let us know if you have any other questions, anything we can clear up.
Thank you. All right, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number three, Appeal 3831. I'm going to need to write "close and reserve," by the way, so we close that hearing. 3831 Brooks, Mark Olson representing Arthur Brooks, Ten Leonard Place, Hopewell Junction, requesting a nine-foot sideline variance for an existing air conditioner condenser pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so we have had the opportunity to see this before. We then had a public hearing where we did hear from one of your neighbors who had some pretty strong concerns about the location of the condenser and the noise that it make and makes and the interference of, you know, her ability to enjoy her home in the evenings particularly. So, but I think we still have to deal with some issues about the existing things going on on the property, the foundation that's there, the fireplace. Do we have permits or anything in place yet for? They're all expired, but.
We, if you, if you will, we, we came, my client came to the building department, prepared to file. They were looking for some additional documentation, sketch of the floor plan for the fireplace installation, and some additional dimensions on a site plan for the deck, both of which have been done, and they're ready to submit for those permits.
Okay, so your expectation at this point is that foundation's going to stay, and you're going to do something with it, you're not going to leave it?
Well, that, I was talking about the deck, the rebuilding of the deck and the, and the fireplace.
Okay, how about the foundation? I think that's.
Foundation, we were, we were told originally to protect the top of the foundation, and then between the last meeting and this meeting, we're now being asked to build the addition. Originally, the addition wasn't being built because of financial hardship, so now we're looking at redesigning the addition on the existing foundation to see what we can do, perhaps at a single level as a garage, rather than the two-story with the living space above.
Okay.
So we're, we're in design process right now.
Before we go any further, do I have a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Lisa, for reminding me. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll get in the habit of it.
I was thinking.
I know, just look at me. All right, so, so we don't have permits in place then, Tom, so there are there existing violations actually on the property?
Yes.
So do, does this board need to act, or do we need to wait until we get compliance, meaning there are permits in place?
Well, or you can make it subject to in your decision and order.
Okay.
That the, well, the foundation either has to be demolished.
Right.
Or a permit to build the structure on it. You can't have a partially complete building or an expired building permit.
And that's what we're working on the design for, the, for a single-story garage and storage structure to go on the foundation.
So, I mean, that's, that's my understanding, so certainly our decision can be subject to them utilizing that with a proper design.
Okay, there was also an issue of unregistered vehicles on the property, is that taken care of?
Unregistered vehicle was taken care of prior to the last meeting, and.
Well, that's what was stated, and then there was a dispute about whether that actually was in fact true or not, so that's why I'm just asking the question.
Yes.
Okay, all right, just making sure. So again, we went through the issue related to the condenser. If the condenser is actually in the place where it would be required to be by zoning for not have a variance, it actually is probably more impactful on the neighbor?
I understand it brings it closer to the house.
Right, exactly, it brings it closer just because of the way the two houses are laid out in relationship to each other.
Correct.
So.
And we did, at your request, take some sound.
That's right, we did ask you to take some decimal levels, yeah.
And if you will, we, we took readings at the property line, we took readings 10 feet towards the neighbor's house from the property line, and then 20 feet, we took an ambient.
And your, your sense was, if I remember correctly, was that her house was 70 feet away? Am I remembering that correctly?
From the location that the.
The condenser's in.
That the condenser would be.
Right.
Was 76 feet.
Okay.
Where it is now is 82 feet.
Okay.
And that point of reference is the front corner of the, of the neighbor's house.
Okay.
So at, at the property line, the ambient noise level, because we wanted a baseline, was 51 decibels.
Which is less than speaking.
Depends on who's talking.
Okay.
With the condenser running, that stepped up to 55 decibels.
Okay.
And with the condenser insulated, it dropped it to 54. The ambient noise at 10 feet away, based on whatever was going on, went up to 53, 10 feet further into their property. With the condenser running, the, the level, decibel level dropped to 54, and the condenser insulated dropped to 53 at 10 feet in. And then at 20 feet, the ambient actually went up again to 54, with the condenser running was 52, and the condenser insulated was 51. So it's our feeling that as you go every 10 feet, you're going to drop, drop the noise of the condenser more and have it actually be less than the ambient.
So when you measured, did you measure at different heights? What height did you measure at?
About six feet.
And her window is how high? I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense.
I would say the sill is probably 12, 14 feet.
So as soon as you moved into her property, when you say ambient, that's not counting it, so I mean, the ambient is still measured would be higher than the actual condenser?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and I think you find that most of the time. Most of the impactful sounds are actually low-level, low-decibel sounds, cars, trucks, knocking, that type of thing.
Things that we just get used to because we hear them all the time.
White noise, if you will.
Right.
What time did you do these readings?
I think it was late afternoon, dinner time, maybe a little bit after.
Time-wise, I mean, I have no idea what time people have dinner.
Oh, was it that late? Eight o'clock.
Okay.
After dinner.
Okay.
That's, wow, for some.
We're Muslims.
Because her concern was more when she was going to sleep, and she was more looking, I mean, from what I could understand, she was looking at readings around 10, 11 o'clock at night when everything, all the other ambient sound is kind of low, and so that's when this humming sound is greater, and it is impacting her sleep habit, I mean, sleep situation.
I think you'd find that the, the ambient sounds, even at night, it could be rustling of leaves in the trees, it could be the road out on, because it's in proximity to 82.
Right, it's not far from you.
And Creamery, those noises will far surpass a condenser that's 80 feet away.
Okay.
What did you use to measure the sound with?
Actually, it was at the board's suggestion, a phone app.
Okay. That's what we had used with the, when we were looking at the vet hospital at the Four Corners.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just concerned when at first you said dinnertime, that you'd have a lot of traffic going in and out to the homes, people coming home from work, but at 8:00 that should have been pretty much settled down, so 8:00 is certainly better, I think. I don't know why there would be a lot of more noise in the neighborhood at 8:00 than at 11:00.
Is it possible to put some kind of shrubbery between the condenser and the property line, or additional, other than soundproofing, but also some additional?
We had talked about that at the last meeting, I think, you know, we don't have a problem with, you know, some shrubs in front of the, in front of the lattice.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Arthur Brooks, Ten Leonard Place, Hopewell Junction, requesting a nine-foot sideline variance for an existing air conditioner condenser? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
We'd have to make sure we had that condition in there, so we probably should.
I know, I was just saying, I think we got to close and reserve. Yes, so do I have a motion to close and reserve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, between now and next month, are you, permit's going to be filed for?
Yes.
Okay, because that will be important for us. Again, if not, we'll make it, have to make it subject to, but the more things that can be in place would really be helpful.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number four of Appeal 3832, East Fishkill Solar LLC, Cuddy &amp; Fader LLP, representing East Fishkill Solar LLC, are requesting a use variance for a proposed community solar facility to be located at 20 Helen Road Rear, Hopewell Junction, which is in an R1 zoning district, as well as a three-foot variance for a proposed seven-foot fence pursuant to Sections 194-16 and 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Property is in the ownership of Frank, Paul, and Eileen Doherty.
Motion to open the public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh my gosh.
You're just commission tonight.
I know.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So we have had an opportunity to review this several times now. This is actually an adjourned public hearing, so we did have.
I think this is our initial public hearing.
Be a couple of reviews.
No, yeah, you're right, it's our initial public hearing, sorry, thank you. We've had a number of reviews, yes. And in the meantime, there's a bee floating around.
Yeah.
In the meantime, I know you got us the new, a copy of the SWIP application, so we've, we've now had the ability to review that. We, we have had a chance to review this pretty significantly. This is a strange matter for this zoning board in that the use that you're asking for generally would require a site plan, but it's not something that's subject to the, to the planning board, and so again, there are some things you're going to hear me say that we've already talked about in review, but I need to get them on the record for the public hearing. So this board is now really under the requirement of doing somewhat of a site plan review. We did have the town planner take a review of, of the information that's been received to date, just to make sure that, you know, if there were any other issues that we were concerned about, one of the things that came to our attention was the fact that it is a residential district, you are asking for a seven-foot fence, which is a requirement of the New York State National Electric Code. Thank you, the National, so, so because of the requirements of that, even though it's in a residential area, there is a requirement that you have a seven-foot fence. So you are looking at a large property where you're looking to set up, in essence, a solar farm, a whole host of solar panels that will be in a fenced area. It's back and beyond in an area, and behind, near the Joe's Dairy Bar area, where there's already a, a Central Hudson's electric substation there, so it's already an area that has seen and has had for many years a utility presence there. So the fencing that you're talking about is going to be very similar to what is already there for the utility substation. It is a large area, I guess a large plot of land that you're looking to use, it's, you're not looking to use all of it because there are some wetlands that are on that property, so you're being sensitive to that, but you are talking about panels that are going to have posts in the ground, so not, the panels themselves are not sitting on the ground or anything like that. We talked about that there's, the fact that there's no risk of electrocution, or, you know, a fire starting or anything like that, that there's no regular presence that's going to be there, there's no office or anything like that that will happen, that there'll be off-site monitoring, that you'll be able to monitor to sense that if some panel is not generating electricity, you'll have the ability to be able to see that from a distance, so there's not really going to be a regular presence on site there. We talked about doing some screening for the neighbors, what were they going to see for the, for the very few neighbors that happened to be there, but if one or two or 16, doesn't matter, and they all have, you know, could potentially have concerns about what they're going to look out, out of their windows. So I'm sure there was a whole host of other things, but again, just for the point of helping people understand that we have been looking at this pretty significantly already. We did actually have the fire advisory board take a look at this as well, because one of the things we talked about was access, appropriate access for fire, you know, in case something does happen, there's somebody, there's some nuisance that happens, again, the seven-foot fence should prevent that from happening, but just in case. So they didn't have any issues. There is going to be a accessory road, for lack of a better, not a paved road, but just an accessory drive, yeah, that will go through the property, that will enable you to get through there, but beyond the initial construction period, like I said before, you're not really anticipating any major or any regular activity on that property that's going to involve people going in and out of the facility. Anything else? Okay, so.
That was an excellent summary.
You want to update us since last week?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Lucia Kiyokia with Cuddy &amp; Fader, and we represent the applicant. I'm joined by Wendy DeWolf and Jamie Fordice from East Fishkill Solar. Just a couple of things I'd like to add, and then I'll turn it over to Wendy and Jamie to, to walk through the plan for those folks who aren't familiar with it. This type of solar facility is known as a community solar facility. These types of facility were recently enabled by the Public Service Commission, and essentially what it allows is the community to benefit from the clean renewable source of energy from the solar facility. So anyone who's a customer of Central Hudson in the area can select to have their electricity sourced from this community solar facility. So anyone who's not able to install solar panels at their residence or their business, or they don't want to, can now benefit from solar energy with these types of facilities. And because they're a relatively new type of facility, your zoning code doesn't address it, which is not surprising, so that's why we're seeking the use variance. And as you indicated earlier, a height variance for the fence, for the seven-foot enclosure. Since we were last here a couple months ago, the applicants conducted an information session with the neighbors.
Oh, good.
On July 17th, so they walked through the plan with the neighbors. They also submitted after the meeting some additional information based on some of the concerns that were raised at that meeting, so just more information about this type of facility, as I said earlier. It's fairly new, so there, there are a lot of questions, but we do have a lot of answers, I think. And as you indicated, we also submitted a draft SWIP, which indicated some stormwater measures, some minor stormwater measures that would be installed as part of the improvements to the access road. The property is landlocked, and there is, there is access through a road, so that's another consideration when we're talking about the use variance and the, and the factors to demonstrate a use variance. So I think with that, I'll, I'll turn it over, and you guys can walk through the plan, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Wendy, I'm sorry, can you turn behind you, there's, we're going to hand you a microphone?
Great, so I'm Jamie Fordice, East Fishkill Solar. So just to speak to a little bit, the, the community meeting which we hosted, we, we did send out notices to everybody on the butter list, same group of folks that would have received notice about this application. I think we had maybe eight or 10 in attendance, many of whom are here, so I assume you may hear from them. We spoke to a number of their concerns, starting with stormwater, described how we would be submitting to you a draft SWIP, which we have, described how the major impervious areas of the facility include the substation, you know, the transformer concrete pads and the impervious gravel road, otherwise, no net change really to the stormwater topology or hydrology on the site. There was some concern raised about the potential for hazardous material releases from PV panels. We addressed that with some follow-up materials, which you have in your, in your packet. You know, PV panels, those materials are enclosed, the glass is rated for, you know, impact from, from, you know, from hail and other potential, you know, impactors, for lack of a better word. And, you know, the materials are in solid state, they don't vaporize, they're not water-soluble, so there really is minimal risk of any release of hazardous materials from the solar panel, and there's documentation and source material in, in what you have. I would reference page five and page 20 of the report we provided. There was some concern about end of life and what would happen at the decommissioning of, of the facility. of the facility. Typically, if this were a lease, we would allow for, you know, a requirement as between the landowner and the project for decommissioning of the project and return to its original state. In this case, it's a purchase of the property, so it's likely that at the end of the initial 20-year life of the equipment, it will be refurbished and continue operation. Property values, there was some concern around that. There's, you know, pretty comprehensive literature review, shows no net impact to property values by commercial solar installations. In this case in particular, the substation next door is much more conspicuous, and if anything would have a more direct impact from noise and aesthetics point of view than the solar facility. And then there was some discussion of public safety and fire concerns, which of course we've discussed in the past informational sessions. And, you know, the facility is designed to comply with National Electric Code, and as you know, been in front of the fire review board, and, you know, I think we've agreed to, you know, walk in detail through the plans and emergency services plan prior to commercial operation with the local fire chief. Those were the principal concerns that we heard from the public. We, as I said, we sent them all of the information that you have. We followed up with a series of calls, I want to say last week or the week prior, to see if there are any additional concerns, of which we really heard nothing additional to what we've discussed so far, so.
Just for the record, for folks who are interested, this is the original application and the information that was provided to this board. So this application is on file, if anybody wishes to see the clerk, and then the second folder is the SWIP application that we were given for us to review as well. So again, there is extensive information that is on the, is on file in the office if anybody wishes to come and take a look at it.
Great. With that, you know, open it up to questions, or wherever you guys want to take it.
Questions or comments from board members?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
One of the things that I'd asked in the review, and I think I'm going to make it part of the public hearing record, that what you're generating in the solar panel is DC volts, which is being converted into AC at the step-up transformer, so anybody touching the panels or any of the wiring that may be around, that they're not going to get a shock, I mean, or it'll be a light shock if any...
That's true, everything's shielded, both the panels and all of the DC conduit, which runs to your combiner boxes and the inverters, and eventually the transformer is shielded.
Correct. And the thing is that, and these panels are fixed, they're not tracking the sun, so that there's not much movement, so for maintenance purposes, you have computers and other electronic gadgets that will monitor it on a regular basis, so if any panel goes offline, you will be told at the remote location that panel so-and-so has gone offline, and then somebody will come and repair it or try to figure out what's going on. So there's nobody at site doing it, and so I wanted to make it part of the record that during the review, these issues did come up, and others came up also. And again, as the chair has mentioned, that all of this is part of the public record, and anybody is free to come and inspect it in our offices.
I think one important, one other piece to get on the record for us is the fact that you are seeking a use variance, as you mentioned when you began your comments, and that generally, but what comes before this board is area variances, sidelines, setbacks, or, you know, some relief from the requirement to have a structure X number of feet away from your property line. In this case, a use variance requires a much, much more difficult review process to be able to get approved. And frankly, one of the most important factors of that is that the property owner is supposed to demonstrate to us that there is really very little, that this use, change of use is a better economic return on the property than in fact what would normally be allowed there. And the fact this is a residential lot, but it is landlocked, so there's no ability to put a driveway in unless the property owners actually are crossing over some other property. And so one of the last things that this town would want to be concerned about is somebody stopping to pay their taxes, just because in essence, they can really never develop this property with a house on it, as the residential use it was, it is zoned for, without some extra variances or other things that would have to cross-access easements or anything else that would have to be in place for it. So that is certainly something for this board, for us to consider, the fact that there is really limited use for this property otherwise, just because of the nature of the way the code, town code was developed over the years. All right, so with that said, any other questions or comments from board members? If not, I think I'd like to open up for the public comment. So this is the request from East Fishkill Solar, requesting a use variance for a proposed community solar facility to be located at 20 Helen Road Rear, Hopewell Junction, which is in an R1 zoning district, as well as a three-foot variance for a proposed seven-foot fence. Does anybody wish to speak for or against?
There's going to be...
Can we ask you to come up to the microphone, please?
There's going to be an entrance on Helen Road, because I do live on Helen Road, and I don't...
Okay, hold on, please.
Come and knock on anybody's door, because I just asked three people on our block.
Okay, can we, you're addressing your comments to us first off?
Okay, I'm sorry.
And so can we ask that you speak into the microphone?
No problem.
And by the way, anybody at all who speaks for any of our public hearings, we just asked if you speak, there's a clipboard on that table, just if you could write, print your name. No, that's okay, just so you could print your name, just so we get your name correct in the minutes, that's all.
Okay, I just want to...
So go ahead.
I want to know if there's going to be an access on that, on our road, you said 20, it's 28, correct?
28.
Okay. Now I want to know if there's going to be access on that road, and there's going to be a lot of traffic. Are you going to have more than one person going there, or no?
Again, you're addressing your comments to us.
I know.
And depending upon what they are, we may potentially...
And they said that they came around to the neighborhood, which I find that hard to believe, because I'm home every day, and I just asked...
Do you get a notice about tonight's public hearing?
Yes, I did, that's why I'm here. This is the first time I'm hearing about it, and I just saw the sign down on Power Road, that's the first time I've seen that, and then the letter came.
Okay, all right. So have you actually had the chance to see the site plan itself?
Nope, no, I couldn't really see it from the road, I, you know...
Jamie or Wendy, either one of you, can I, we're going to ask you...
I'm happy to address, I apologize if you didn't receive our letter in the first place.
No, I did get the letter, I just didn't get anybody knocking on my door regarding what, you know, the whole thing. I'm more worried about cancer, I know we have the power thing there, does this give off cancer, does it?
First two things, yeah.
So first, to start with the access...
EMF is addressed, electric magnetic fields. They did address in their paperwork EMF emissions, electric magnetic field emissions, but let her answer one question at a time, okay?
No, there will not be access off of Helen Road.
Okay, you'll be going through a powerhouse?
Will be going through power drive. And two, there will be very limited...
Can you, while you're there, just point it out on...
Can you see it there?
Right here. Access power drive, and there'll be access behind here.
Point out Helen Road.
And Helen Road is here.
Out there, right.
Okay.
And then there will be traffic here during the three months of construction, and then...
That's in the road, in that road, not in Helen?
Not on Helen. And then after that, so for the 20 to 40-year life of this project, there will be basically twice, twice a year, someone will come out to check the facility.
What is the benefit of us as a neighbor, us living there, what's the benefit of it to the community?
Well, as they did explain before, that this is a community solar facility, so they do actually have the ability to allow you as a neighbor to purchase the power from them through Central Hudson.
And then I got to put power, to add to the power panels?
Well, because they're located so close to that substation, they have the ability to take the electricity that's generated from the solar panels and feed it right into the substation for Central Hudson, and please correct me if I'm not understanding this, but I think I've heard this enough that I am somewhat following this.
Repeat it.
I'm repeating, exactly. So the electric, because we really were looking at it, can this sort of thing pop up anywhere? That's one thing we were concerned about. And it really does not have the ability to pop up anywhere in town. The benefit of this site is the fact that it is in fact so close to the substation, that the power that's collected through these panels is fed essentially underground, my understanding was, to the substation, and then Central Hudson then distributes it. It actually has the ability to, on a very limited basis, to help several businesses in the area as well, who would then be able to benefit from a lower-cost source of electricity.
Okay. Getting back to your question.
I don't have a question, you want to ask the second question, go ahead.
The second question, about the cancer?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to ask her?
Go ahead, well, ask it, you're worried, can you address the EMF situation?
Yes, EMFs are not a concern as part of the solar facilities, there's been studies done related to that, and the, there is, the short answer is there's no concern related to solar. Do you want to talk more?
Yeah.
It's at the end of this report.
We have so much cancer going on around here, it's just crazy, that's why I'm asking.
So on this report, which we submitted as part of the record, I just refer you to page 10, and there's a description of studies that have been done with respect to potential EMF associated with the facility, so.
Bad enough the water, right, that's why I'm just concerned.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else? Sure, come on up.
Hi, my name is Michelle McAllister.
Sorry, can you wait till you get to the microphone?
I'm sorry, my name's Michelle McAllister, I literally are going to be 250 feet away from this project, okay? And I do have several concerns. I own 35, my parents own 33, we're right next door to each other. Still concerned about the fire aspect, because that road that's leading into this was made for a horse and buggy. It's very tiny, it's very little, it goes over the train tracks. They're not going to be on-site, I understand you're going to be able to see when things go down in their retrospect.
Right.
How do I know that a fire isn't going to hurt my 87-year-old parents, my property and their property, when you have this one tiny little area to get in and out of? We've got trees there, there are pine trees, that's a very big concern to me for safety. That's number one, okay? Number two is to address the woman's point of view, what I was told at the meeting, there were five homes that were asked to go there, and we were there, and it's 5% off your bill that you're probably going to save if you do enroll in this monthly, 5%, okay? My question is, I have a couple, but my question is the town, what is the benefit to us by having that there? Is it tax dollars coming in? Are they going to be taxed at what they bought the property on? Or are they going to be taxed at what it's appraised at now, which is $179,000? Or the $400,000 that they bought the property for?
You can ask all your questions, and then I'll try to address them.
Let me see, oh, they're using 14 acres now, okay, out of the area. If they were to say a year from now, two years from now, they're going to expand this, would there be another meeting needed in town approval before this is done? Or would that just be able to be done because they are the owners and they do have the variance now to do what they want to? That's another one of my concerns.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have to look at my notes.
No, that's fine, go ahead, I'm making notes as you speak, so I can address them, I just want to have you get your comments out.
One of my neighbors who is closest to this, he's actually right on the site across the street from me, he had questioned them about glare coming from the nuclear, not the nuclear plant, God forbid, the electric plant, Central Hudson, and they told him they would put a covering on the fence. I just want to make sure that that's in the notes, because this was very important to him, that this is done.
I'm not understanding what the question is.
My neighbor had a...
It's about glare, and we had...
A glare from the fence, because it's going to be seven-foot closest to his home.
Just the fence, I thought at first you were going to say off the panels.
No, no, not off the panels, off the fence. And he was told by, I think it was one of you two, was it you? That they would put a coating on. I just want to make sure for his benefit that that is in the record, because this is something that he's, you know, very adamant about.
Okay.
Because he's actually closest to this site as anyone, okay? Let me see, what else? Oh, the drainage, you know, we have the well water, we have the creek, we guard the creek, we live on the creek, we love where we live because of the creek, we fish, we eat the fish out of the creek. I also want to make sure that nothing's going to be done to hurt that, or to hurt any erosion that's going to be coming in, our well water. This is also something that, you know, the neighborhood is concerned about, like this woman was saying. You know, there were areas in town that we were promised nothing would ever hurt it, and it did, down the road. Now, if something does happen, I can go look at your plans, I know I can, and read through them, and ask questions, and go on the internet. Who do we go to after, what, by the way? Would that be the DEC, would that be the town, if we do have a problem in the future with the well water? How do we address that?
Okay.
The taxes are a big thing for me, because I don't understand why, what the big thing for the town would be in this, other than 5% off your bill, to tell you the truth. And I think, oh, yes, one other thing. Right now, we have a very big problem back there. We have dirt bikers coming all hours of the night.
You have what?
Dirt bikers.
Oh, okay.
All hours of the night. People dropping their children off, the police are aware of this, they've been called. And what happened was, they used to come up the power line and go by Joe's Dairy Barn. Joe's Dairy Barn was smart, they put up barriers. What they're doing now is they're literally coming downhill, and they've cut me off, I had to call the police, my neighbors, we've all had a problem with this. Once they put this fence up, is there going to be a detriment around it, so we're not going to have one big dirt biking, you know, thing going around this? Because it is a very big problem, I'm talking like 2:00 in the morning, 12:00 at night, you know, three, four, five, six of those things at night, and make a lot of noise. And I just want to make sure there's some kind of detriment put there, that we don't have these bikers coming in out that there's a fence, and riding around this, that they're going to put some kind of blockage up, so that'll eliminate, as a good neighbor, that problem. And I think, I think that's it, sorry, a lot, but...
It's a lot.
It is a lot, it's a big concern to me.
I have six concerns that you've raised, I will try to address some of them, I may ask the applicants to speak to some of them, some of them we may not necessarily have talked about or have considered yet, so it's important for you to tell us things that we need to make sure we put on there. So you talk about fire safety first and access. Again, I mentioned earlier that we did have the fire advisory board take a look at this, to make sure they can get fire equipment into this facility in the event that something happens.
Right.
Their expectation is that there's not going to be any need for them to get in there, but they did take a look at it, and so they gave us their no-concern letter regarding their ability to be able to treat and get equipment, treat something at the site or get equipment in there.
I just also would add that the road as it exists now, no, is not in a state to be accessed, and we have plans to improve the road.
Improve it with a gravel base, not as an asphalt finish, we're not going to be encouraging people to be dirt bikers or anybody else to be using that facility.
Exactly. That's another question I have, now that you just brought it up, how are you improving it? You're making, you're enlarging this, you're enlarging that area that goes over the train tracks now? You're going to enlarge it so they can get bigger pieces of equipment in and out of there? How large is this going to be? Do we know the exact measurements of this?
We do, we actually do, but Wendy, I'll ask you to address it.
Yes, so we were out and we staked the road yesterday, with Central Hudson as part of our right-of-way, we have a 50-foot right-of-way, the road will be about 20 feet.
Okay.
Thank you. And it's not going to be paved, it's going to be gravel?
Correct.
Well, the discussions that we've had is that it will not be paved, so if we need to put that in writing in our part of our decision.
I would be, everything should be in writing, if you think about it.
Yeah, no, understood, so I appreciate that. Tax value, again, we probably would have to have, put a conversation to the assessor to get some sense, I really truly don't know, unless you've already explored this issue, that would be great, if you can answer that, go ahead.
Sure, we haven't spoken with the assessor directly on this project, but any project of this nature is typically assessed as commercial property and pays taxes. In this case, it would either be an assessment based on the value of the equipment, or a payment in lieu of taxes, which is, there's been a lot of work done at the state level to work out as between municipalities and the solar industry, what the appropriate level of taxation is.
It's an income-producing property, so...
Exactly.
Correct.
Exactly.
So speaking to benefits to the town, in addition to, you know, reduced bills for those who subscribe, this will be increased tax base for the town with no draw on town resources.
Well, that's my question, that was my question, but she said she couldn't answer it. Right now, it's assessed at $179,000, you just bought it for $400,000. My question is, will the taxes be at the $400,000? And are you, you're going to change the zoning to commercial, is that also my...
Not changing the zoning.
It's still staying residential?
Correct.
Okay.
We are just expanding the use of this specific property, if this gets approved, we have, it has to have a majority of the hands on this board.
That was an important question, too.
I think the expectation is, and maybe that can at least be answered, the expectation is the taxes are going to be greater than the current vacant land, correct?
I'd just like to...
That is fair, yes.
We don't know what the amount is.
I just want to comment a couple of things, and maybe, first of all, yes, it will be
I'd just like to.
That is fair, yes.
We don't know what the amount is.
I just want to comment a couple of things and maybe.
Yeah.
First of all, yes, it will be reassessed, it will be revalued. Utility properties, just like the substation next door, are in a state of flux in New York State. The state recently took over the valuation of the Central Hudson substations, et cetera. They're kind of taking it away from the local assessor. Probably in years to come, it's going to be the same thing for solar, because I think everyone, I don't know if everyone heard at the beginning, the Public Service Commission has started this type of program to encourage the creation of these solar panels and farms. So that was the first step to enable it to become part of our utility system in New York. So they'll probably keep going, just as they did years ago. They even preempted town governments from regulating substations and power place anything to do with the public utility, okay? That's one issue I wanted to address. Second issue is on your stormwater concerns. New York State DEC regulates all stormwater in the state, but because they didn't have the personnel and manpower to do it, they mandate that the town government enforce the state's stormwater regulations. And the very basic premise is, the amount of water that flows from the site today cannot be increased by any improvements on the property. And the way they address that is they're, they've submitted an extensive stormwater plan, which will go through an analysis of any additional water that might be created because of the panels on, on the property. The coverings, and if there is an increase, they then have to show how it's contained on the site and dissipated on a regular basis, just like the normal runoff. That's all evaluated by the town engineer. There's also, the town has a stormwater consultant that participates in that process, and New York State audits the town on an annual basis to make sure we're in compliance with all the regulations.
And is that report available for the public to look at?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
It's part of the record now.
We can.
Right here to the planning office. This particular one is here, and there's an annual stormwater report that's filed with DEC every year by the town that the town clerk has. So that's all a public record on that. The other thing I want to address is, under New York State law, town government has the power to zone property. And when zoning was put into effect in 1963, and it's been modified over the years, the town planners at the time, the town government just looked at it on a piece of paper, it was one big flat town. And they disregard wetlands, mountains, everything else, and they say, this is a nice area for residential zones, this is a good area for industrial. The reason there's a zoning board is because by just looking on a piece of paper, you don't really know the physical features of property that could limit the use that's shown in zoning. In this particular case, it's zoned residential, there is in any way conceivable if this board decides that it can be used residentially. So the applicant previously has submitted to the board an opinion of an independent appraiser, it's here, you can review that, too, that's compared this property to other properties, has gone through all of the limitations on the property as to why it can't be used as a residential property. And under New York State law, if you prove that, that you can't get a quote, "reasonable return" from your property based upon the current zoning, you may appeal to the zoning board to get a use variance to allow some other use. And that's why the board is, is now weighing this, and they have, as the chair lady said at the beginning, taken extra steps here as a use variance to make sure all of the planning issues are taken into consideration, the stormwater, access, fire access, fencing. So that's just a couple of comments, just so you know, that it's, it's a very detailed process, and, you know, there's a lot of information in the record that probably would interest you.
Yeah, we've actually spent several months, several meetings already.
I've been watching, yeah.
Of course, over several months, getting information from them and reviewing it. So you did have a couple other issues, so let's go through the rest of the issues. You asked about expansion, and they're talking right now about a specific amount of acreage being used, and the acreage is going to be limited to some extent because of the presence of the wetlands in the rest of the site. But that doesn't say, by giving a use variance to the property, in essence, we're saying the property has the ability to be used within approvals. If wetlands ever change in the future, they potentially have the ability to come back, but I think we, we could actually write it into our decision that we could limit its use. So I appreciate your bringing that up as an issue. We had talked pretty significantly about glare from the panels themselves, and we were actually told that there's, the idea is that they're absorbing the, the sun and they're not reflecting it, and so, so, but we hadn't had any discussion about glare on the fence, so. So am I understanding that you did agree that the, the chain link fence that you're proposing will have some kind of cover to it?
Yeah, we would be happy to make it final coded.
Okay. So again, we can include that in our, any decision as well?
Sure. The, the other thing to mention from a glare perspective is all of the panels are oriented to the south of the site, so away from this, this particular home.
The homes are?
To the north.
To the north, thank you.
Indeed. And, and so, and so any glare impacts, were there to be any, would, would.
Are going the other direction.
To the south of the site, and it's a, it's a vacant parcel. There you go.
Yep. All right, and then dirt bikers. I'm probably jumping here a little bit. To some extent, are dirt bikers actually going on this property?
Yes.
Okay, and so.
Not only dirt bikers, hunters, you name it. It's, it's used for every purpose you can imagine. And the police are fully aware of this because calls are made continually to them, because we'll have shots all the time, there are dirt bikers all the time. It's become quite a problem in the neighborhood.
Okay, well, certainly, as the property is now going to have a specific use on it that's going to be fenced, it's going to limit the area that, that these folks will have to be able to do other uses. The planning board in the past has actually put boulders or fencing or something to actually delineate where the wetland buffer begins, so that we do in fact keep people out of that buffer. It's usually important for homeowners because we don't want somebody to buy a house not necessarily knowing what the heck a wetland buffer is, and then saying, oh, let's just mow it down. That's why we tell the developers to either put big boulders or a fence along there so that the homeowners know, they really shouldn't be disturbing the property beyond that. So we may have to have some discussion about what to include, if you have any suggestions about how you might be able to limit dirt bikers going around, because certainly, if this is wetlands, we don't want them going in there anyway. So again, I appreciate the fact that you're bringing that to our attention. As neighbors, you know this property much better than we ever would, so it's, that's why it's so important for you guys to tell us what you know about the site for us to consider. So, did you want to address anything more related to that? Okay.
Other than to say, from a noise and nuisance and safety point of view, we'll be very different.
You don't want them there either.
We don't want them there either. We'll be a very different neighbor than they've been, to the extent that we create by virtue of the fence, a motocross track, or, you know, if that's John's concern, then we're happy to, to work collaboratively with you guys to think of a solution that would prohibit that.
Are you going to have video cameras up at all?
It's, it's not typical.
Yeah.
Although we, we could entertain it.
Like motion sensors, activated ones, so that in the event that dirt bikers are coming, at least we can start seeing who they are or something like that.
That might also help with the safety factor, also with the fire. No one's going to be on that site. I understand that the fire department thinks this is fine. If you see the trees and everything, it really is, I'm going to speak to the fire department myself because it, it really is a concern to me. I have 87-year-old parents that can't come out of, out of their home. They're 250 feet from this.
Yeah, but again, these are, these are passive solar panels, this is a piece of glass, but again, we talked about the fire, but there's no fire.
Fully understand that. Do you understand kids are back there? Do you understand that kids and teenagers are back there?
Hot out the nuisance factor.
It may not be the solar panels themselves, I fully understand what you're saying. I had a meeting with them to understand this. I did not understand any of this before I went to this meeting. I had a lot of preconceived, you know, things about the solar, but there were kids who hang out there all the time, all the time. That's my concern. If there's a fire and these panels are in there, no one's in there to see it, you know, this is a very big concern to us.
Let me see if I understand your concern. Are you concerned there's going to be a brush fire or something that's going to get into it, or the fire would start there?
Either, actually, either.
Because the kids, the kids shouldn't have access to it.
Oh, yes, we all understand that, but.
From the seven-foot fence, and they're going to have to maintain that fence as part of the, maintaining the facility. So children shouldn't be getting into it, but I don't know, maybe they can, most of the trees and stuff are going to have to be removed around the, the solar array, they can't be blocking the sun, but maybe they can address your concern a little bit more. I just wasn't sure which way you were going with it. Fire getting there and creating a bigger fire, or whether you think there will be a fire that would be caused by the array itself?
I'm concerned with both. I'm concerned that the best-laid plans go astray. Everyone's telling me that these won't go on fire. It could happen. Also, we do have kids back there, and you know how kids are. They see things, they touch things, they do things they shouldn't do. My concern is because of that.
That's what Monique said about impact, but I'm visioning as kids throwing rocks over the fence, yes.
And people shooting a deer and missing and hitting the panels. I mean, a lot could happen.
I agree with you.
All right, go ahead.
Just wanted to add on page 14 of this report that we submitted, it addresses the fire risks and the studies they've done, or the lack thereof of fire risks associated with these facilities. Again, you know, if someone throws a rock over the fence, it's not going to catch on fire, that's not how these solar systems work. And as, as Mr. Hassan also mentioned, you know, this is, there is, as we discussed earlier, this is, there is very little risk to the design of the solar. It's basically designed by NEC code so that it doesn't catch on fire being a main driver there. And then the second thing, in terms of the fence, as you said, it's going to be a seven-foot fence. Often, these fences, I mean, the NEC code either says it can be a seven-foot fence or a six-foot fence with a foot of barbed wire. And in many cases, we might consider doing the barbed wire on the top, similar to what's currently on the Central Hudson fence, just for that very reason of potential, you know, if, I don't, I don't think people could jump over.
We actually had that discussion.
Yeah, we don't want it to look like a prison either, do you understand? It's a residential area.
It is already there at the Central Hudson facility, so that's, we did actually have the discussion about wanting it to be similar to what's there already, so.
You know, and I don't know if it helps, I'm sorry, but Wendy, is there any big difference between what you're doing and what's on the house tops around the neighborhood?
No, other than I would say ours, because it's more contained by a fence, tends to be designed more safely.
And larger, a lot larger.
It's a lot larger, but I don't think, I don't know, I don't know if insurance companies will be allowing people to put something on top of their house.
A lot of people can't.
It's a real fire danger. That's all. I was just trying to give you a frame of references to what the fire danger may be. That's all.
Any other concerns?
No, thank you.
Okay, if you don't mind, if you can just print your name in. Anybody else? Again, please, understand, we want to hear from you as neighbors, so don't hesitate to. Come on up.
Jerry Cassilla, 4 Flagler Road. I'd just like to ask, what type of security lighting do they plan to incorporate at this utility? Because right now, that substation you have over there has turned our 15, 20 homes that we have, almost looks like New York City when you drive up our road. It's quite bright, and that's just a concern I have.
Yeah, so there will be no nighttime lighting or any security lighting at the facility.
Thank you.
Yep.
Could we ask you to sign in, please?
Sir? Sir, Jerry.
Could you sign in, please?
Sign in the list.
Yes, sir, come on up.
Jim Damato, 24 Helen Road.
You're a neighbor.
How are you? I met Wendy yesterday behind the property. My property line is right on that proposed dirt road that's there.
Okay.
They went in and staked it out, and I'm not happy with where the stakes are, especially when you come down to where you're going to go over the railroad, that's right on the corner of my property. But Wendy expressed having them move it further away.
Okay.
I'd like something in writing that that's what will happen.
Okay.
Also, she offered to put, take down the ugly balsam pines, which are doing nothing there except dropping limbs on my property, and putting up an evergreen.
Buffer.
Row to buffer between my house, because it's, it's right there, back my property, my house is right there. And so, my neighbors, so I'm sure it's going to be right down, because they're coming in off of power line drive and then cutting in behind our properties. You know, the old saying, shot himself in the foot when he sold property, but now, we don't want to be the butt end of.
Oh, and we appreciate that.
You know, him making right on what he did. Thank you. I got to sign.
Yes.
Thank you. And Wendy, if you can speak to, are you, I understand, you have to go out, stake the road, see where it works best, but in, in light of the neighbors' concerns, is it, can you move it? Can we?
We're doing our best to work in Central Hudson, so our right-of-way is defined as a bit wider, right?
The mic is not on?
Is it on now?
It's on.
The right-of-way is defined as a 50-foot right-of-way, and we are, what Central Hudson has, has expressed it, like, just to center the road on the right-of-way, which again would leave a certain number of feet from, from the property. We have requested that they shift it, that we try to shift it away from center if possible. Again, this is, it's, it's in our, in our deeded right-of-way, it says we have to center the road on the right-of-way. So it's, we're kind of at the will of Central Hudson if they'll let us shift the road, but we are going to do.
Okay, so the, you are staking the right-of-way?
We're staking the right-of-way.
Okay, so that's where I understand the staking, the right-of-way would be at your corner property line.
Right.
But if they're going to center the 20 feet in a 50-foot right-of-way, then they're going to be 15 feet, the road will be 15 feet from your, which is not much, I agree with you.
It's not that, it's that the way your property goes, it goes at an angle.
Okay. Can we ask you, sorry, we.
So, actually, I have an interesting.
Let him, let him finish, please.
Right at the corner where he's got the gravel going over, where he obtained a right-of-way from the railroad.
Yeah.
Is right on the corner of my property and there. So there is no 10 feet this way. That road's going to be right on my property line, he's going to go right alongside of it.
Okay.
So that's why it's either going to be shifted or, I'm sorry, I can't build within a certain amount of property line, neither can he.
So actually, the right-of-way out of Central Hudson shifts, shifts to the south, so we'll be able to actually, it's actually a little bit more distant. The center line shifts south, so we'll be able to come out on the railroad tracks a little bit further to the south and right near his house. And we're going to do everything in our best efforts to stay as far away from his property and to screen it as, as works for Mr. Damato.
You have me a little confused then, so are you saying that the stakes, as initially placed, may have been closer than they should be to his property line?
No, the stakes near the, to the end of Central Hudson are further south, they're correctly staked.
Okay, but, and that's what he's complaining about now, is the current position of.
It's now going to burn.
So the, and the current staking is at the edge of the right-of-way.
Right.
So if you stay in the center, you'll be 15 feet in from the staking.
Right.
Now, when you put the, if you're going to put landscaping up for him, which are the fir trees, those fir trees will be outside of the right-of-way. Am I correct? Because you've got to keep the right-of-way open. Is there a place to put landscaping of fir trees without going on his property? Or is he willing to have the trees on his property?
So we don't have, right now, from my discussions with Central Hudson, it seems like we can put plantings in the right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else about the road issue? Okay. Wendy, do you have any idea when you'll know from Central Hudson whether they'll agree to allow you to move that or not, or no?
No.
Okay. Yes. Come on back up.
I do have one other question.
Just wait till you get to the microphone.
I do have one other question. When we were at the meeting with Wendy, there was a map that was shown to us, and one of our neighbors showed another way to get into the property, actually, to use, which would give you a second way in and out. Did you actually explore that?
Yes.
And what happened with that?
Central Hudson said we, you know, we had a right-of-way access, and they wanted to use that.
And you can't...
Sorry, you're...
I'm sorry, you can't budget them either way, because that...
Is there a benefit to the neighborhood to use that second access?
Yes, there is, because then you wouldn't be right on top of everybody's property, number one, coming in and out, and number two, you would also have a second way if you needed to get something in and out of there as well. We had talked about this at the meeting.
Can you tell me on the plan that they have here?
I can't.
No? Okay.
It's not an existing access road, and it's not something we have rights to use.
It's used by Central as Hudson now, for their own benefit, for their trucks in and out.
Okay.
Because people do a lot of skiing back there, cross-country skiing, and that's how it came to our, one of the neighbors that did the skiing showed it to us.
Okay. So Wendy, I'm just, can you just show us where it is on here? Just, I understand, you don't have rights to it or anything like that, just for us to understand, because if it's less impactful to the neighbors, then it's certainly something for us to think about.
So it's, it enters off of here, and it comes.
Oh, so it goes around the back?
Yeah, it comes around the back. So Central Hudson and Con Edison will not let us cut around the back.
Is there a roadway there now?
No.
No. It's just a...
An overgrown...
It's desire lines, people have used it for their own, you know, they've kind of like self-created this path.
Right.
Okay. All right. But it's, so it's not in, you have no right to use it, even just for the three months of construction?
We asked.
You did, okay. Okay. Anything else? Yes, come on up.
Excuse me, I have another question. When you come up on that road, you're telling me that the only use of that road is going to be for this site only.
Use of which road?
In other words, because there's a lot of property back there that's owned by a certain person, and I just want to know if he's going to be able to get his vehicles in there to use that property for any other purpose.
Okay, the use of which road?
Homes, whatever. I don't know what else.
No, which road are you talking about? You're asking us to tell you that the use of this, of some road is only for this purpose? I don't know what road you're talking about.
Power line.
That's, that's it.
Power line, okay.
Power line, right.
So power line, my understanding is it actually is going to end at your site and go then, through, your access road then continues on in your site in a fenced structure.
So this still belongs to the power line? The road?
No, only, only the...
The right-of-way is a right-of-way. They don't own that property.
Okay.
Central Hudson owns it.
That's part of the problems of one of the, of the site, is the fact that this site is landlocked. It has no frontage on any street.
Yes, I don't know where else the right-of-way could go to. That's my confusion.
There's, there's a lot of area back there that they aren't using right now.
Are you buying all of the property from the current owner? Or is the property being subdivided in any way?
The entire property.
Okay, so they're now going to be the owners of the property and not the...
Let me take a look at this map.
Sure, go ahead. Because you're only using approximately half of the site for the solar facility.
Correct.
Excuse me again, I, when I looked at it on the sign you had on the road, it looks smaller than that, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're comfortable with...
Do I have to sign it again?
No. That's fine, not to worry. Anybody else? Yes, come on up.
Good evening. My name is David Vickery. I actually live in Cold Spring. I'm here on another matter tonight. But I have a farm where we have a large farm-based solar energy production facility. We researched a lot of ways of doing it, and I have a couple of comments about it I heard here tonight. First, I'm obviously going to say I'm very pro-solar, and that I think that community solar is a great idea. We just don't have a facility to do it for ourselves. Couple of comments is, well, several. Regarding fire, I did look at it myself, and it's, there's more hazard to the, to the solar equipment from the house than there is from the solar to the house. And that's one of the reasons the fire departments have trouble with it, because of the daytime and the voltages and so forth. And the safety within the facility is generally great, but to say that there's no danger to a DC line is inadequate, incorrect, because high-voltage DC is very hazardous, but it's protected and it's in conduits and so forth, so, and it's behind a fence. So that's another thing that I just sort of thought was irregular. The glare to the south is of course no interest, but the sun comes up on the east and goes down the west, so if there's any metallic material in the plane of the, of it, or in the mounts that could reflect, certainly an east-west orientation can reflect east and west. It isn't all south, because that's the way the sun works. And the thing that really got my attention upfront was because we're looking at stormwater mitigation and not lack in effect, there's probably going to have to maintain permeable soils within the area, and those will probably create some foliage that grows as time goes on. And to say that you're only going to go in there once and, once or twice a year to do a visual inspection seems to overlook the trimming and, and mowing that may have to happen. Because if you put, unless it's all gravel underneath there and it's with, and I don't know what the site is, but maintenance of shade, preventing shading and that the undergrowth doesn't grow up too high and wrap itself around it, probably is going to be a factor. Needs some traffic in and out, minimal, but every property needs mowing and maintenance, and that wasn't mentioned tonight. Maybe it's been, it's in the plan, but it didn't go through. But I think it sounds like a great idea, good use of land, and I would have, I'd entertain having this as my neighbor if I had the opportunity. Thank you.
I think we did discuss the, what would be underneath the rest, but maybe you could just mention it again.
It will be grass, and then it's just been industry standard to mow twice a year, and that's been enough, right? But if there's, for some reason, there's, you know, very robust grass growth, that we will come in so that it doesn't, you know, but, but the typical industry standard in the northeast is twice a year.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in.
Anybody else? What's the pleasure of the board?
Close and reserve.
Second.
I think, is there anything else that, any, based on the comments that we've heard tonight, is there any additional information that we need? Because remember, if we close, we can't consider any new information. So before we close, I just want to be sure that we have everything that we need.
We've had the review, and I understood everything. The only thing that was new, I mean, the fire issue, we had already discussed, and the fire department had already looked into this issue. The thing that just popped up recently was, I mean, the two issues that actually, one was a reflection from the fence, and I was trying to figure out, is that an issue that we need to maybe make it part of the record?
We can put that in our resolution.
Okay. And the second one is a height issue, because they are requesting seven foot, and if...
We put that in our variance.
So, so should we go to eight feet or something like that? Because especially when, you know, this, the neighbors have said that this site has a, has disturbances from the bikers and people hunting and skiing and all that stuff, and it's been a neglected property because it was landlocked, nobody was policing it, so maybe something...
Well, I think, sorry, not to interrupt you, but I think maybe what we should do is, because they've now presented us with two different options for the fence, that either, we had talked about them using the fence that was similar to the electric substation, which has the barbed wire at the top, which is frankly pretty ugly. So do we want them to...
Propose, yeah.
Go with that, or, because it's just similar to what's in the neighborhood, or do we in fact want them to have some other version of the fence? That's something we could include in our decision.
Yes, we can, and maybe, I don't know, issue raised by the neighbors, what do they prefer? I get the impression they don't want barbed wire, because it looks like prison. I, I think the problem with going too high of a fence may have the same effect, so I don't know. Do they want something higher than seven feet? I think seven feet's going to stop.
Use a number six chain link so kids can climb up.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's what we discussed, something along that line, to make sure that
didn't happen in our review. I, I'm afraid that going higher than seven feet, again, you're looking into a stock-eight effect.
Right. Prison effect, yeah.
We'll, we'll take your recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. I was just looking for a little feedback, and I got at least nods.
Yeah, we got some nods in the heads.
Nods and shakes of the head, so.
Are you familiar with what number six chain link is? Okay, good. All right. And you're comfortable with that? Good. Okay, so...
And the other issue that came up also, and the second issue, I should say, was basically the neighbor is concerned about, you know, having the property so close, your right-of-way being so close to their property. So I think, you know, if you can just work with the neighbor and, and try to put some kind of trees, shrubbery in your right-of-way, if the Central Hudson doesn't give you a move, doesn't allow you to move it further away, that you try to accommodate the neighbor as best as you can, remove the trees that they are concerned about, because you're going to be doing some development there anyway. So after you'd finished your construction, if you put some trees and foliage and things like that, so make it nice for the neighbor and everybody else, and you'll be there for the next 20 to 40 years, as you said, so, got a, quite a few years to go.
That's our intention.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I'm John Roslin. I'm at 36 Helene Road. I thought, I heard that there's going to be a covering to the fence, not a chain-link fence. I pass the substation every day. Now, not every day, but there is a big glare off of that chain-link fence, so I'm hoping for a coating on their, their fencing.
Okay, we, we heard the, the other neighbor that suggested that, one of the other neighbors said, and they're willing to do that coating on the fence, so...
I thought I heard a, a number six chain link.
It's a, it's a chain-link fence that has a coating on the links themselves.
Okay. Didn't understand that.
It's a smaller link so that kids can't get their feet or hands into it to climb over it. Instead have a brace above.
I didn't understand that chain-link had a coating on it. I thought it was just a bare chain-link. While I'm here, I'd like to say, I heard from Jamie and Wendy. I will, I border 28 Helene Road.
Okay.
Our border is common, and there will not be any noise that I will hear in addition to what I hear today from there. Great. No lights, great. No interference from TV, radio, or electrical interference caused by the solar panel. Great. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm, I think I've, I have, all my issues have been raised and addressed, so...
All right, so you're making a motion to close and reserve.
Unless, okay, so I make a mo...
Is there anything else that, based on we, what we've heard tonight, that you need to provide to us? No? Okay.
I, I think we're all set. I, is, yeah?
Okay. I make a motion to close the public hearing and reserve the decision.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. So we have 62 days. I think we're going to include this in our discussion with our attorney this evening to give him some direction, so we will hopefully at the next meeting, but if not, it'll be at October.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
All right. Take care. Item number five, I had previously mentioned that we are not going to open the public hearing because the applicant did not put their sign up again, or did not purchase a sign. So at this point, because this is now the second time that they have not complied with the requirements, I want, I can ask for a motion from the board to consider this application to be abandoned?
Yes.
All right, and there, because advertising was now done twice for two public hearing dates, there's not going to be any refund done, so do I have a motion to consider the application abandoned?
Yes, straight motion to consider abandoned with no refund.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great.
I'd also like to advise the board that we have a zoning violation prosecution pending, and the attorney contacted me, and they're going to discontinue the operation of the business at the site, and we're going to enter into a stipulation to allow us to monitor that for a period of time, and if, if it is resolved, then...
So the issue has potentially gone away as well?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll be resolving it hopefully in the next week or so.
Thank you.
All right, great, so let's move on. Item number six, Appeal 3839 Coy, Thomas Coy, 3 Louise Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a two-foot front-line variance for an existing treehouse pursuant to Section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. This section of the code was amended by the town board on June 22, 2017. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so last month, we did have an opportunity to look at your application for the first time. You are building a structure, you have already started to build a structure, a kid's playhouse.
Yes.
It's not actually attached to the tree, so it's kind of a misnomer to call it a tree. I think you told us it was about three feet away.
Three feet from, from the trunk.
And, and I forget how high you said it was off the ground?
10 feet to the deck.
Okay, so, but it does have a full set of stairs in essence to get up there, and it's like 10 by 10, and it had a, you were going to put a deck around it, or something around it, a little deck around it. So it really is, a 10 by 10 is the equivalent of a shed, actually, a small shed, and so it's, all it is, is just being raised up, which probably limits how much it's being seen. You're, you're asking for a two-foot front-line variance. You have a, if I remember correctly, you had a corner lot?
Yes, I said.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't think we necessarily had any concerns about it. We did need to hear from your neighbors. We were concerned, though, about the fact that there were no plans, building department, there was no permit or anything like that, so regardless of what the board decides, you will have to, you know, make sure you deal with the permitting issue. So is there anything else you want to add to what I've said?
No.
So are there any questions or comments from board members?
No, I'm good.
All right, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Thomas Coy, 3 Louise Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot front-line variance for an existing treehouse? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
This is Appeal number 3839. Applicant is Thomas Coy, requesting a two-foot front-line variance for an existing 10 by 10 playhouse pursuant to Section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. The location of the property is 3 Louise Lane, Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant has applied for the above-stated variance, and whereas the board moves to adopt the standard decision in order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to the community, as the raised playhouse was built approximately three feet away from the base of the tree, and the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as this is a corner lot, thus requiring it a two 50-foot setback from the roadway, the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the, on the physical or environmental condition. Now therefore, be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above-stated variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Give it to Mary. I heard her voice first.
Yes.
So votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Tara.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. Now you just have to go please appeal with the building department.
Okay.
All right, have a good evening. Okay, item number seven, Appeal 3840, Earhart-Cordovano. Brett T. Earhart and Tammy L. Cordovano, 602 Stormville Mountain Road. Stormville are requesting a three-foot front-line variance for a proposed addition pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you? All right, so we had a discussion about this last time, where we saw your application All right, so we had a discussion about this last time where we saw your application for the first time. You do have a, a family member that's getting up in years. And so one of the things that you talked about was expanding your home to be able to, because I think you had a raised ranch?
Yeah, it's a raised ranch.
And so you want the ability to be able to put a bedroom and a sitting area or something on that first level floor so that there would be minimal entry impediments-
Yes.
For somebody with any kind of limited mobility down the road to be able to get into that to the bedroom.
Correct.
And if I understood correctly, you don't, you don't have to change your septic because you're gonna reconfigure the house and give up a bedroom somewhere else.
One of the bedrooms you're gonna be walking through, so it's not, well, it's not gonna be a bedroom anymore.
Right, you're reconfiguring the house in a way to use that in a different manner, so. Um, and so it's the, the, the exterior is still gonna match the house and it's, you know, it's, I don't think that we really had any concerns. It's not a separate apartment, it's gonna be all part of the house. Um, we did talk about the fact that you have a ca, did we talk about the fact you had a canvas shed on your property?
We, they had sent me a thing about that. We discussed it, we took care of the issue.
You took care of it?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just, I-
Yeah, 'cause you're only allowed to have it up for six months and you can take it down for a day, put it back up again and-
Well, not for a day.
That's what I was told. You could take it, that's what somebody told me. You take it down for a day, you can put it back up. I took it down for a week, put it back up again. So what's the ruling on a temporary structure?
Yeah, it's a temporary structure.
Yeah, what's the ru-
So what is the ruling on how long you can keep it up and put it down? I'm sorry? Six months and it has to come down. And then, for how long before you can put it back up? That's it. It's up, it's a temporary structure. So if I take it down and then I go buy a new one and put it up, it's okay? I'm sorry, can I, you're addressing this board? Okay, so if I take it down- Somebody here from the Building Department here? And then I put it back up, buy a new one, a new one, a new canvas? Replacing the structure. Uh, but that's what I'm trying to figure out. Yeah, no, you're, it's a temporary-
You're gonna have to ask for an interpretation and file for a review on that probably. I don't know.
Permanent structures.
Right, it's not, the idea is not, it's, it's not supposed to be something that's there all the time. That these canvas structures-
Because we were told that-
Are being discouraged.
Yeah.
No, when I called the Building Department, that's what I was told. No, I didn't assume it.
Okay, well, we can't resolve that here, so.
I'll take it down.
If there's a, if there's a viola, the only thing is, you're gonna have to deal with them on that. If there's a violation, we can't, on the property, we can't grant your-
They told me there was no violation-
Okay.
Because it was all taken care of.
Then that's fine.
No, it, it was just all taken care of because there was-
I'm trying to make a very simple statement. I'm not saying there is a violation or not. If there is one, we can't grant your application as long as there's other violations on the property.
Okay.
That's also make sure there's not and you deal with them. We're not gonna solve that here right now.
Okay, that's all we're, we just asked the question, that's all we're dealing with it. All right, so anything else related to your request that we didn't bring up in the context and, okay. Um, I think you had mentioned that you had talked with some of your neighbors or no?
I did talk to some of them, yeah.
That's, okay, I thought you would, I thought I remembered hearing, seeing that.
Not last time because we were-
Okay, good. That's, that's always important.
Yes, I have talked to some of them.
Are there any comments or questions from board members?
Um, do you plan to bring the canvas structure back or are you, is it, is it, is it, um, is it installed right now as, today or not? Or has it been?
He said it is there today. He took it down and put it back up.
Yeah, I'll take it down, I'll take it down this week. I'll take it down tomorrow. It's, it's a portable garage.
Yeah.
You put the thing up, it's got metal frame and it, it's like a tarp going over the frame.
He's now been made aware that he's, he's not allowed to have it.
The reason is we'll make it part of the condi, one of the conditions would be added to it, to the resolution.
No, it'll be down tomorrow. It's not that big of a deal. It's-
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Brett T. Earhart and Tammy Cordovano, 602 Mountain, Stormville Mountain Road? Stormville requesting a three-foot front line variance for a proposed addition. So seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ends?
Sure. This is Appeal number 3840 for Brett Earhart and Tammy Cordovano. Uh, the name of the project is a three-foot front line variance for a proposed addition pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance, located at 602 Stormville Mountain Road, Stormville. Resolution offered by zoning board member Mary Seminera. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the addition will be finished in the same manner as the existing house and the neighborhood is only minimally developed with only one other home in the area. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicants are building an addition onto their house as the health-related and safety needs of their family have changed. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore-
Oh, okay. You just wanna read this?
If you don't mind, just read that.
Now therefore be it, be it resolved that the zoning board-
That's fine, go ahead.
There, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby finds and approves the above stated variance subject to the removal of the canvas garage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
Okay.
Okay, now you just deal with the Building Department.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's on to you.
Do I have to sign or anything or?
Nope. Nope. You'll deal with them tonight, you can-
You know, I, yeah, that may-
Have a good night.
I thought, yeah.
All right, item number eight, Appeal 3841 Zupan, Jerry Zupan, 36 Flower Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a twelve-foot sideline variance for a proposed ten-foot by twelve-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good evening.
Aye.
All right, so last month, we had an application, an opportunity to review your application. You actually have a tortoise who you are looking to be able to provide some, a structure to and to be able to give him some, um, relief from the, the weather conditions, et cetera. Um, you are, you have a very steep property, right, rising from the roadway going back to the right of your property where you're proposing on the side that you're proposing the shed. Uh, you are actually near a paper emergency access. Um, so you actually have an extra buffer between you and your next neighbor, which, um, is not necessarily kept clear, so you have extra vegetation there. And we did talk about the fact that even your neighbor has extensive vegetation on their property as well. Um, the shed is not, this shed for your tortoise is not really gonna be visible from the roadway because it is gonna be set back but, um, on, on the side there. And we did actually talk about the fact that we, this board has approved a number of sheds to be placed on the side yards of, um, homes there. So, um, are there anything else you wish to add to this? Okay, so any, oh, I should mention the fact that you have a rock ledge on your property as well, that that really limits your ability to be able to where you can put this.
Unfortunately, right, that's, that's why I'm placing it right in front of that rock ledge, so I have enough-
Yeah, that, that's important for us to just get on the record, so. Okay, so comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
None.
All right, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Jerry Zupan, 36 Flower Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a twelve-foot sideline variance for a proposed ten-foot by twelve-foot shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Appeal number 3841 for Jerry Zupan. It's a twelve-foot sideline variance for a proposed ten by twelve, ten-foot by twelve-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. It's a residential district and the resolution is offered by zoning board member Tara Franco. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the shed will be screened from the roadway and other homes in the neighborhood have similarly situated sheds. Additionally, there is an emergency access road between where this shed will be and the neighbor's house with vegetation, vegetative screening and the neighbor's yard. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant, the applicant's lot is very steep and the rear yard has a large rock ledge. The variance requested is not substantial and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance.
Is there a second?
Second?
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set. You just now deal with the Building Department, please. Thank you. All right, so item number nine, Appeal 3842 Van Name, Patrick Van Name, 17 Overland Road, Wapinders Falls, is requesting a nine-foot front line, twenty-foot rear line and one-foot sideline variance for an existing house, a twenty-foot rear line variance for an existing deck, a fourteen-foot rear line variance for an existing patio and a nine-foot sideline and twelve-foot rear line variance for an existing shed pursuant to Section 194-17, 194-107B3 and 194-93 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Rich Travis again for the-
Representing the applicant, right?
Patrick Van Name, uh, due to his injury and-
So we had an opportunity to review this last month. You did mention that Mr. Van Name bought the property approximately a year ago but has become injured and is now looking to move and sell the property.
It's actually in contract, uh, the sale, so, yeah.
Okay, um, and so essentially, everything was there when he bought the property except for the deck doesn't have a permit, okay? Um, we did talk about the fact that there was a trellis on the deck.
Yeah, we moved that. You wanna see pictures?
Okay, good, because that was gonna make it higher than the six feet and so we said that was a concern.
I have pictures for the board if you'd like to see them.
Okay, that would be great.
We need it for the file, yeah.
Yeah, for us to be able to put this in the file would be great. Have it start at that end and we'll-
Do you want, uh, copies for everyone or not?
One is, one for the file is fine. Oh, great.
We just see that-
All right, so, and we talked about the fact that the house itself was built many years ago, so it's probably predated zoning. So it wasn't, he certainly didn't build it. He bought it, it, in the place, it's, so we're not gonna have him move a house that he didn't put there.
Yes.
We did talk about the fact there is a hot tub there, but you did say he's, that's going to go with him, so.
That's going with him when he moves. If you need to make it a condition, um, I'm not objecting to that. I mean, the, the other option would be the building inspector could pursue, uh, you know, um, an action if,
Well, it'd be-
You know, if you're concerned about that not happening.
They'll be coming out to inspect the deck, 'cause they're gonna have to close out a permit on the deck, so.
It's going with him when he moves.
Okay, so it is, anything is gonna be subject to getting the appropriate certificate of compliance or completion related to the deck.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so anything else you wanted to add related to that?
No, that's, that'd be my next step if this goes through. I've spoken with Max already, the building inspector, and, um, I'd either deal with it myself or I'll, you know, I'm, you know, have an engineer certify it-
Okay.
To his, the Building Department's liking.
So is there, are there any questions from any board members, comments or concerns?
Okay, 'cause we're, we're just looking at the variances. We're not guaranteeing any of the certificates of compliance.
No, exactly. They have to, he'll have to deal with the Building Department after, if we grant the variance, that's the-
Oh, of course, yes, I under, I understand that, yes.
Making sure that's clear.
Okay.
I don't have any other comments or questions or anything.
I'm good.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak regarding for or against the, the appeal from Patrick Van Name, 17 Overland Road, Wapinders Falls, requesting a nine-foot front line, twenty-foot rear line and one-foot sideline variance for an existing house, a twenty-foot rear line variance for an existing deck, a fourteen-foot rear line variance for an existing patio and a nine-foot sideline and twelve-foot rear line variance for an existing shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
In reference to Appeal number 3842 by the applicant Patrick Van Name, again seeking a nine-foot front line, twenty-foot rear line and one-foot sideline variance for an existing house, a twenty-foot rear line variance for an existing deck, a fourteen-foot rear line variance for an existing patio and a nine-foot sideline and twelve-foot rear line variance for an existing shed. Pursuant to Sections 194-17, 194-107B3 and 194-93 of the zoning ordinance with the location of 17 Overland Road, Wapinders Falls, with the resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer. And whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as these structures have been in existence for many years and were built by the prior owner. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means. The variance requested is not substantial and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries?
All right, thank you.
You're all set from us. You just deal with the Building Department.
Yeah, I'll go and see Max. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our last public hearing of the evening is item number ten, Appeal 3843 Rin. Gerard Rin, 18 Smally Lane, Stormville, is requesting a seven-foot sideline variance for an existing propane tanks used to heat the pool pursuant to Section 194-1, sorry, 194-95C of the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes.
So moved, right? All in favor?
Aye.
We got a copy.
All right, so we have an open public hearing. So we met with you last month to review your application. You have a very, very steep property and because the trucks to fill the propane tanks actually have to be able to get up the driveway and access these tanks. We're not talking about the pools where it should be. We're not talking about the pool itself being any closer. It's really just the tanks that, it's really a requirement from the gas delivery company that they have to be able to access them. So there's no noise associated with it beyond the delivery trucks and the, you know, for the summertime. So, um, you know, and you really, we talked about the fact you have very, very few neighbors, you know, so-
Right, yeah.
People are not really gonna be impacted by this, so. Anything else you'd like to add? So any comments or questions from board members?
No, thank you.
Again, we really took a look at this one last month, so.
I'm good.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Gerard Rin, 18 Smally Lane, Stormville, requesting a seven-foot sideline variance for existing propane tanks to use to heat the pool? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ends?
Reference to Appeal number 3843 by Gerard Rin.
Fight over it.
Does she wanna read it?
No, no.
Name of project, seven-foot rear line variance for, sideline variance, I'm sorry, for existing propane tanks used to heat the pool pursuant to Section 194-95C of the zoning ordinance located at 18 Smally Lane, Stormville. Resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer. And whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the propane tanks cannot be seen from the road and there's a lot of screening between the applicant and the neighbors. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant's lot is very rocky and the tanks must be accessible to the gas delivery company. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variances.
Second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night. All right, so again, that was the last public hearing, so now we're just on to reviews in most cases. These are gonna be the first time that we're seeing these, uh, with the exception of just the first one. So item number eleven, Appeal 3836 Heitman, Gregory Heitman, 17 East Hook Cross Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a four-foot front line variance for an existing sunroom and a variance for an existing pool located in front of the dwelling pursuant to Sections 194-94 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Is Mr. Heitman present? Okay, this is the second meeting that he has not been here. And Pam, at the last meeting, we directed you and Jeannie to send a notice, which you did. When we last met with Mr. Heitman, um, we had asked him to provide a survey. So I don't think there's any reason he shouldn't have been able to get a survey done in sixty days.
At least communicate with us about it.
Right, and I don't think Pam's heard anything. At least she hadn't as of a week ago, so.
So I propose that we refund the money?
We consider the application abandoned and refund all but five dollars.
Correct.
So that's a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no problem. Item number twelve, Appeal 3844 Lemke, Guido Rin, Wen, Guido Lemke, 207 East Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a one-foot sideline variance for a proposed eighteen-foot by three-foot deck expansion pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. Let her hand out.
Well, that's nice.
Uh, we've been in this house since eighteen seventy, at which point the house is built with a deck.
Can you give it to me and I can-
Yeah, we can pass it on.
It's built with a deck and, uh, the deck design was such a, too narrow, tried to put a table in the middle of it.
Oh, can you go to the podium, please?
Put a table in the middle of it, it's really been interfering. So after these many years, we've decided it's time to fix it. So what we'd like to do is expand the deck by three feet-
Okay.
Which takes us about a foot over the twenty, uh, twenty-five foot setback. Uh, the drawing that show, that demonstrates that is the first drawing. It's taken off the survey of the house as built. Uh, the house has had two additions done to it since. Both of those have had permits requested, COs granted, so the house is in compliance.
Okay.
Uh, the deck modification is the second page. And, uh, if you look here on the right-hand side, you'll see a light line. The, the increase in the deck is that to the left of the, of the line. And the interference part of it is about a foot that goes towards the neighbor's house. And if you look at the last page, it shows our house, which is on the left, and the neighbor's house, which is, I'm sorry, yeah, our house on the right, the neighbor's house on the left.
Right.
And you can see that the separation between the structures of the house is about a hundred feet.
And what is in the, in that distance? Is it vegetation or is it clear or is it?
It's clear, open.
It's clear, okay.
There's a driveway on their house, and then the rest of it is grass. We have had trees there in the past, we probably will replant the trees, and so they'll probably give it a bit of a break.
Okay.
But the interference is truly one foot, and even that's a sliver, not the full length of the deck, so it's really rather small. Increasing that, well, the neighbors, by the way, we talked to our neighbors, and they're the only ones who are really affected by it. Other people can see it from the road, from other houses, it's barely a sliver looking through trees. The neighbors are 47-year neighbors as we are there, that's the Moores, and we've talked to them, we've looked at it with them, and...
Oh, they gave you a letter? Wow, they gave you a letter?
They gave us a letter, but they were not able to be here.
Okay.
So they gave us a letter and said that we would play. So that's the request, and I hope you folks will look favorably upon it.
Okay, so just so you, the board members understand what the letter says, it's dated August 20th. Karen and Al Lemke, our next-door neighbors of 47 years, have made a request for a variance to the zoning board of appeals for the expansion of their deck by three feet toward our house. If approved, this expansion would encroach on the 20-foot town setback requirement toward our house by about one foot. There is currently a plus or minus 105-foot separation between our deck and their deck, which are the two closest structures on the property. This will be reduced to approximately 202 feet to the requested variance. We are in agreement with the granting of the variance. Signed, Richard and Linda Moore. So we'll put this in the file, and then when we have the public hearing, we'll make sure it's part of the record.
Back next month for the public hearing, I take it?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's what, just, let's be sure, hold on.
We're not done yet.
You just have to be sure if there's any questions, or are there any questions from board members? I think this is very nicely laid out for us.
Yeah, very good presentation, no questions by me.
Straightforward.
That's very...
It's a case of, if we ever sell the house, which I presume we will one day, have the survey done and come back and say, oh my God, you got a foot.
Well, yeah, you don't want to find out you're 11 inches over, right?
For $75 in two hours, I think it's worth investing.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve for advertising for public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, so Pam will give you your instructions for your sign, and then we'll see you next month. All right, so, moving on. Item number 13, Appeal 3845, Consigliato, Vincenzo Consigliato, 161 Milltown Road Homes, is requesting a 1,503-square-foot variance for a proposed 2,400-square-foot pole barn for the storage of motor vehicles pursuant to Section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so let's start with the fact that you're requesting a pole barn, but you're talking to store motor vehicles, so that, if you're storing motor vehicles, it's a garage. Okay, I think, are you talking about the physical structure itself as a pole barn?
It's a frame-and-post pole barn.
Okay, understood, but I'm just saying, it is a, in terms of the request, it is a garage, if you're storing motor vehicles.
Okay.
It's pole barn, it's pole barn construction, is what you're saying.
Yes. Yeah, it's a garage, detached garage.
If you're storing motor vehicles, it's a garage?
Yeah, it's for my cars.
It's going to have a finished floor?
Yeah, I'm going to concrete it.
Okay. Please explain why you need a garage that is that large, and even beyond the size of your house, it's going to be larger than your house, so we've actually asked people in the past to give us floor plans, or some sense of what are you putting in there, so that we understand that, why you need something that's so large. And within your explanation, please assure us that you are not operating any kind of...
No, I don't have a business.
You know, auto repair, or anything like that?
Not at all.
We just have to be sure that we hear.
Yeah, I have trucks, I got plow trucks for my property, it's...
Okay, for your property.
My driveway's pretty long.
Okay.
It's, and I got antique cars. I have old cars that I have in storage right now, and I'm paying every month for them. So I have motorcycles, I have quads, I have a bunch of toys.
Ooh, that are not being used on the property, though, right?
No, they're not, actually, my kids are on motocross team.
Okay.
Up in Walden.
Okay.
Up there, they race.
You heard the last neighbor about...
Yeah, I know, but nope, they race on a team up on the weekends, so I got trailers. Eventually, I'd like to buy an RV, because I take my cars to car shows down south, Maryland, and I go away a lot, go to Florida.
So are you looking for a tall structure, or what are you...
Well, it's, the ceiling will be 16 feet, so I could fit an RV back into it.
Okay, so you are looking for a structure that's going to be able to fit a, with an oversized garage door, et cetera?
That's what I'm looking for.
What materials is it going to be, is it going to match your house, what's the...
Yes, I have colors that it's going to be. My house right now is brown, it's going to be gray, which I plan on painting my house like a charcoal gray type color. I have pictures of what it looks like. I think I submitted pictures of what it looks like. Got one door.
I did not get pictures with my copy of the application.
You got like a floor plan?
I have a, I have a survey, and then a, the footprint, you know, the sketch plan, survey of the, well, not survey, just the layout of the building.
It's 11-acre parcel.
Oh, okay, it's, you have an 11-acre parcel, okay, what's the zoning over here?
It's BR3, R3.
R3, okay. So he's over three times what he needs to have.
Three times, yeah.
But he's got very little frontage, so that's why it's a long lot.
And I'd like to be able to take my cars in and out without having to move cars and trucks that are in there.
So tell me about the lot, is it flat, is it elevated, is...
It comes up off the road, then it kind of plateaus out, but then it goes down, and then goes back up in the back.
Is it vegetated, is it clear, is it, will your neighbors...
The whole, whole lot?
Yeah.
Trees.
Okay, because you write on your application, right on the front of it, that nobody's going to see this, I need to understand.
Oh, yes, you can't see it from the road, you can't see my house from the road, that's how far back it is. There's trees, there's, from the road, there's just a narrow driveway opening.
You're almost 375 feet away from the road.
The driveway's 375.
I have, you have surveys?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Where you hand wrote in where you're proposing putting the garage?
It should be on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, right.
So your proposal was about 530 feet away.
So here's Milltown Road, all right, so your driveway is going to be somewhere along here, because here's your house.
Yeah, that is my driveway.
Okay, and so here's your house, and then, so here is where you're proposing it. So how are you going to get into there? What's the connection between your driveway and here?
There's an open, it's all open here.
Okay, are you going to put in a paved driveway, a gravel driveway?
I'll put a gravel driveway.
Okay.
Going into it.
If you're talking about the weight and everything of RVs, you know, of an RV and other things.
Yeah, it's going to be gravel.
Okay.
Item 4, contact.
Where's your septic?
My septic is in front of my house.
Okay, that's okay.
Actually, here's a picture of it, septic is right there.
Okay, and your well is back here?
My well's here, and it's going to be here.
Okay, so you're not going to hit anything?
Nope.
You're not going to hit your well, or anything like that?
No, no, the well is, uh...
Well is right here.
Yeah.
No, I know, but if he's coming back this way, see how his driveway comes?
Yeah, that's kind of like making a little...
It's bigger than it looks.
Yeah, yeah, because it would become a missile.
Okay.
So it, and I can't turn it.
But again, that looks like your, that looks like your well right there.
It is my well, yeah.
Yeah, so you got to be careful that you're not going to hit that well.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty far away, 30, 40 feet.
Okay, you may just want to put some protection up, or something around it.
Okay.
But so, so this, you're talking about putting a structure that's larger than your house?
Okay.
In a residential neighborhood, that's, so it sounds like you have a lot of vehicles, is really what you're saying?
Yes, I do.
And some of them are large, so trailer, and the RV, et cetera, so.
And I don't want to keep all the stuff that's outside my house outside. I'd like to keep everything inside, protected.
You had requested, I'm looking for the numbers here, it's, I mean, it says 2400 square feet, I guess.
60 by 40.
60 by 40, but again, when you look at the, the proposed layout that you have given
us, that's 52 feet, 40 feet on one side, and then you add 12 feet, and that comes to 52, so why the extra eight feet?
And the other is 24, and...
Yeah.
That's about 40 feet approximately.
Your application has a rectangle, you...
The what?
Your application has a simple rectangle, 60 by 40, but your footprint plan is, has a lot of angles in it.
Your two diagrams are not matching, okay? The survey that you just showed me, where you're showing it in the back of the house, that's showing a rectangle, and you're saying 60 feet by 40 feet, but then we also have this plan.
That's my house.
Oh.
Oh!
They said they need...
That, well, because they had to measure the footprint of it to get whether you were exceeding this 60 foot, 60 percent.
Put a big house on there.
It doesn't say that. That's why we're all getting confused. All right, we get it. The calculation was done related to your house, we don't need that.
Okay.
All right, I don't know what the letter of the word...
And the shape of the building is because I'd like to be able to get my cars out, and I can't turn it the other way, and if I was to put the garage doors on the long side of it?
Right.
I'd have 10 garage doors.
Yeah, that would be worse.
I would think, you know, it wouldn't look that good.
I mean, frankly, I do like the look of it, with the one larger garage. Is it going to have a second story at all, even partial?
No, no.
Okay, good.
It's why it's, for them to build it like this, it's a lot more money, and it's just going to look awkward.
Okay, have you talked with any of your neighbors about this?
Yeah, the one that's right in front of me.
Okay.
Mrs. Ross, and she was like, Ben, I can't even see your house.
Okay.
My, uh...
All right, it would be helpful if your, your neighbors are going to get a letter from us for the public hearing, so it would just be helpful if they heard it from you, what you were proposing to do.
I like to keep my property nice and clean. If you drive up my driveway, it's nice, clean, the grass is always mowed, a little rock wall, rock garden, it's just, you get to the back, and then you see what cars I do have that aren't really restored, and my cars that I drive every day are in my driveway. I have five cars in storage, I got three motorcycles in storage, I got two of them home, street bikes, Harleys.
So you don't have any shed in your house right now? You don't have any shed on your property right now?
I do have a shed, and it's, it's not on, you have a survey of it on there. Eventually, I could get rid of that, because I'll have enough room.
Rick, did you have a chance to go after this property?
No.
Okay.
Garage door on?
It's got a garage door on it?
No, no, not concrete floor. It was built, it got brought, dropped off.
Yeah.
No concrete floor. What was that?
It has electric to it.
There's no electric to it. It was, there is a panel in it, but it was built that way, and dropped off, but it's not hooked up.
The conduit stuffed up in the back?
No, not at all. There is a conduit going in the front of it, but it is not connected. It was, when I got the shed, it had electric to it, so they had to cut it off, right at, when you pull up, you'll see it to the left side of it.
A lot of conduits running from there. You got underground service going, all kinds of conduits coming up.
To where?
Where your service lines coming in from the street.
Yes, yeah, there's, I already had that inspected, there's no lines going to the shed. The shed was actually inspected, and it's written on paperwork, panel, no electric to it.
Okay.
There is, so there's no electric going into that.
And so its location is okay, we're not concerned about?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good.
So you have a shed or a garage, and then you're building up a second garage now?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay.
And does your house itself have a garage?
Yeah, my wife parks her car in there.
Wouldn't want to make her no...
She's got to have at least one.
Yeah, I don't get...
Say no more. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to advertise.
Let's hear it from the neighbors. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, see Pam, she'll give you your instructions, and then we'll see you next month for the public hearing, okay? All right, item number 14, Appeal 3846, Belucci, Christine Belucci, 2792 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 49-foot front line variance for a proposed 400-square-foot front, square-foot front porch pursuant to Section 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so, oh, it's on Route 52, that's why, I'm like, you're only, it's only one foot away from the road?
Yes.
Route 52 is a state road, so you need the 100-foot setback, and so you're actually proposing something that's 51 feet away. Okay, so where is your house itself? Is your house itself within the 100 feet?
Yeah.
And when was your house built?
39 or 40.
So we don't have to deal with that, because it's pre-existing?
Pre-existing.
Got it, okay.
And I have a question as to whether it's right, it says 51 feet to edge of road, that's not necessarily...
Oh, that's not your property line, though.
You're going to be 39 and a half feet from your property line? You got to go by your property line, not the edge of the road.
Yeah, there's a, there's likely to be a right-of-way?
You wrote here 51 feet to edge of road. It'd have to be to your property line, your front property line is what controls, not the edge of it.
How does she know, how does she find out if there's a filed right-of-way for her property?
Have to have a survey or measure it. If you don't have these pins that you could draw a line to, then you have to have a survey to do it.
How does she find out if there's a filed, a dedicated right-of-way?
She would have to look at her deed.
Yes.
You have to go back to the, to the...
How long ago did you buy your house?
03.
03. Do you still have, you would still have your deed and stuff? Because you should be able to see on there, you had a survey done by the bank, so it would show you whether there's a right-of-way on there?
I'm trying to look it up.
It's note 11, I got it.
What is it?
Note 11.
Note 11.
Note 11?
It's to the edge of pavement, we're looking.
It's the edge of pavement for state road.
Is the property line?
No, state road.
Oh, state road.
Oh, okay, all right, so you're good, okay.
Okay. Oh, it's in the trunk.
I was wrong, my apologies. Thank you, Pam.
No, it's not something we see very often, so, okay, so for a state road, it's 100 feet setback from the edge of pavement.
But do we need a variance for her property line, too? What do we do then?
It's 100 feet from the paved road.
It's 109 from the edge of the paved road.
To any building.
That's the zoning code.
Okay, so it doesn't make any difference how close they are to their front property line? We're not raising that at all?
Well, this is pre-existing, not conforming, I mean, then you would, theoretically, you would have to be, well, if you're 100 feet from that, and you're building, and no one, you'd have to be under your feet from the edge of pavement.
From the edge of pavement, not from the property line again.
Never from the property line, okay.
Yeah, so the property line doesn't factor in.
So she is asked, so the 50 and 49 is correct.
Okay.
Okay. May a couple.
No, it's, it was important for all of us to understand that. Okay, so you're looking to do a 400-square-foot porch, like, explain, I don't have a drawing of what you're proposing, I don't think, at least I can't see this.
What's the actual dimensions of your porch?
Yeah, what are...
Is it a rectangle?
Eight foot wide, what is, what are you proposing?
Just a side porch for aesthetic purposes, because the side of the house looks like a barn, so it's just...
So 10 by...
Eight foot by, yeah, eight foot by...
I don't have them with me.
What?
It's approximately 400 square feet, I don't have the drawn. It's approximately 400 square feet, I don't have the drawn.
But 400 square feet could be 10 by 4, it could be 8 by 5, what's your-
Right, so a rectangle on the length of the house.
The length of the house, like 10 by 40, 12 by something?
Something like that.
20 by 20, you know, I don't know. Well, it wouldn't be 20 by 20.
Runs the length of the side of the house.
It's this little, it's this little thing.
In fact, I indicate-
I got that.
Oh, you can't even, yeah.
So it's, okay, so it's running the length of the side of the house?
Right.
Yeah.
You don't know how long it is off the top of your head about? You probably should, yeah, bring that information with you for the public hearing, make sure you got everything, okay? You have some plans or something, then we can look at it without, okay? Okay?
I should just say porch.
Yeah.
Pam, your note says it's a front porch? It appears to us it's a side porch.
It's a side porch that extends to the front, apparently.
Yeah, it does extend to the front.
Ah, that's why.
A wraparound?
The front was there already.
Got it.
But does it, by you putting that on, does it become a wraparound porch?
Not really, no.
So it's not connected to the front porch?
No.
Because that's the way you're drawing it.
Does it extend beyond the front line of the house?
No.
So your, your, front of your house bumps out?
Oh, yeah, a picture speaks a thousand words.
Oh, there we have it. See, a picture's worth a thousand words.
No, it stops at the front line of the house.
Oh, so it's 49 bumps out. So it's 51 feet from the edge of pavement to the new structure.
It's, you're talking, this is a second-story deck?
No, no, no.
So it's just really a covered porch?
Yeah, because it looks like a barn.
It's a covered porch, okay.
When you came down the road, it just looked like, so it's just kinda like breaks up-
It actually makes your house look nicer.
That's why it's, yeah, it just kinda breaks up that ugly-
Yeah, it breaks it, I agree with you, it breaks it up. It makes it look nicer.
That was the point.
Right, that's a bump out there. So this is existing-
So number one, it's not proposed, it's existing?
This is existing, not proposed. Are you planning on putting a floor there now, is that it?
Ground level.
So it's just the ground?
Yeah, really it's just-
It's really a porch roof?
I guess so, yeah, it was really just to make it more appealing.
It is, I mean, it's, it's attractive, yeah.
Right.
It blends in with that, I guess like a shed bump out on the, on your house.
So it's a side porch, though, not a front?
Side porch, but it means a front yard variance.
Well, you know, we can't make this stuff up, right?
Yeah.
So it's an existing structure?
It's an existing, yes.
Is that the angle, the road and stuff, yeah?
So we'll have Pam correct this for the actual notice, but-
Well, but with all due respect, it says we proposed on the application.
Right, but Rick has already, Rick has pictures, so he's showing us it's there.
I got you.
And quite frankly-
You said, okay, go ahead.
Is porch the right description of this? Is it really a roof overhang on the side of the house?
It's a covered-
There's no porch in the sense there's no deck or anything.
Yeah.
There's no patio even under, she just has ground there now, is it gravel or anything? It's gravel?
Right now, it's ground.
Is it finished, or you planned to do more to it?
She doesn't plan on putting a deck there.
It's a structure.
An overhang.
It's a-
But I haven't seen the pictures.
Yeah, take a look at it, I'm not sure porch is the right thing.
So when you-
Yeah, because a porch implies you're standing on it, on that structure.
In your application, you said proposed porch, what does that mean?
No, proposed was a mistake.
It's not finished.
Oh, okay.
It's there already.
What do we call that?
An overhang?
I think it's an overhang, I agree. Alright, so it's not a porch, because you're not gonna stand on it, we're gonna call it an overhang.
So for an existing 400-square-foot-
Side.
Side, overhang.
Overhang, yes, thank you. It's not a lean-to, right?
See if you can get the dimensions for us?
Of course.
Okay, whatever, it's 10 by 40 or whatever, okay?
That's right.
Okay, are we all in agreement, this is okay for public hearing?
Yeah, what I would propose suggests is that if you can call up the zoning and building department tomorrow, a zoning department, and tell them the exact dimensions so that we advertise up correctly.
No, call me, not downstairs.
No, no, I just said zoning.
Call our clerk.
Yeah, the zoning department.
Call her.
Of course, I can come over if you-
Okay.
If you're here at 8:30?
Yeah, you're gonna have to get your sign anyway.
Yeah, when you get the sign, motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you. Sorry, we have to work through this.
Thank you, I just do, I come back-
That's why we do these.
You have to come to-
Come see Pam.
Pam's gonna give you your instructions for your sign, okay? Sure, get right now.
And then we'll see you next month for the public hearing. So I hope you folks all understand, we take the time now to go through your application so that when we do the public hearing, it can go through smoothly, okay? So item number 15, Appeal 3847 Smilkstein, Michael Smilkstein and Veronica Herrera, 26th Clover Branch Road, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a 15-foot sideline variance and a 34-square-foot size variance for a proposed 30-foot by 24-foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. I sent in paperwork requesting a 10-foot variance.
Yeah, but you're coming to be on this for the application. Okay, hold on.
Along with the updated survey-
Oh, it was crossed out, okay, so it just wasn't updated on here, that's, that's okay.
Yeah.
When we advertise, we'll make sure it's correct.
Yes, and it's 24 by 30, 24 feet wide, 30 feet deep.
So Pam, he's re-
He changed it on the application.
No, but see, I think he's mistaken, don't change it yet.
Okay.
When he says 10-foot variance, he's actually looking for 10 feet away from the line.
Right.
Okay, so that's 15, that's a 15-foot variance.
You're supposed to have 25 feet.
Yes, I know.
So if you're only gonna have 10 feet, you need a 15-foot variance.
For the balance of-
Oh, and, oh, I can't go 10 feet off the property line?
You have to take your requirement of 25 feet, if you're only gonna have 10, you need a variance for the other 15 feet. So it is a 15-foot.
Your variance is for how much you're taking away.
I see what you're saying, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah.
But Pam, he's saying the proportion is 24 by 30 instead of 30 by 24. I'm just, you know.
It's 24 by 30.
I have 30 by 24.
Understood, but he corrected us and said it is 24 by 30.
You have to explain why, given your survey, why being further away of the property line is gonna interfere with the side of your house.
Well, it's also where this garage is gonna be, if it's moved over towards the house more, it's gonna be very difficult to get cars in and out of it because of the, I have a garage, a side garage on the house.
Side of the house.
Yeah.
But so the garage doors to the proposed garage will be-
Facing the road.
Facing the road?
Correct.
So I'm not, I'm not seeing it, I'm sorry.
Then there's a garage under the house.
Correct, it's a raised ranch, so the cars go in the sideways, so if the garage-
Make the turn left to go in.
I know, but I pass your house every day. You actually started clearing over there, it's at the end of your driveway where many, many other houses on Clover Branch Road actually have that garage at the end of the driveway there, because you, you kinda go down just a little bit, just a little bit from where Clover Branch is, you're like the second or third house in from past Creamery.
Right, right.
Okay, yes, okay, so I actually saw that it started getting cleared over there.
Yeah, and we were advised by our contractor to start the wall, then, we, we had no idea about this whole process, and we, we were visited by the inspector over here, and he-
Well, didn't you have a permit to start the wall?
We have, we had, we're in the process of doing that, and, and we kinda jumped the gun on our contractors.
But let me tell, I had to go looking for this, you know what I mean? It's because there's so much screening on those properties, you have screening on your side, there's, there's even some screening in the, but there's trees and stuff, so it's not really visible, it's, and there are many, many other homes on in that area.
I have the side-
I can't say all of them, I don't, you know, because my eyes are on the road, but there are definitely a lot of other homes in that area that all have garages at the top of the driveway there, or the bottom of the driveway, whatever it ever wanna say. Okay.
Going back to my question?
Yeah.
Are you worried about the interference to the side of the house or a place to turn the cars around?
Well, if I went by the town setbacks, it would be, because of the dimension of the garage, it would be actually crossing over, to be like almost right, budding right up against the house there.
Was there a reason, for example, you couldn't be 15 feet away?
Because it'll be easier for us now, because it will be right in front of the driveway going down.
The existing driveway.
Of the existing driveway.
So they'd be able to pull straight in as opposed to having to go off to the left a little bit to be able to pull in?
Yes, it's kind of a-
That's what they're, but as you pull out of the garage, if you're gonna, unless you're gonna back out onto Clover Branch, are we still gonna want some way to turn?
See, that's- Some more room to turn.
Well, that's why I asked the question, it was sort of like implied in answer.
There's a lot of different reasons, but, yeah, that could be the major reason, yes.
Because I don't see it interfering with the side of your house, but you might need room to turn around, that's 48, that's 48 feet, 30-
You can't back out onto Clover Branch, especially because you've got trees right on the side of your driveway there.
We actually have to turn the car.
Well, that's why, that's why your driveway is the shape it is, is so you can back up and turn to go out frontwards, right?
Yeah.
Motion to advertise?
Well, just, the only thing I have to ask is, why are we giving a size variance, Pam? We're not, is, it's more than 60% the footprint of the house? We don't see those calculations anywhere?
It says 26 by 44 is the house, and this is 30 by 24.
Yeah, maybe that's why.
So it's more than-
30 by 24 is only 720 square feet, so it's less than 750, which means it must exceed more than 60% of the-
It does.
60, 60, 45.
So why do we need the size variance? Okay, we're gonna check on whether we need that second variance or not.
Okay, um, do you need to see, like, as far as the garage, because we're gonna, we're planning to get a local company that manufactures these garages.
Neighbors are gonna wanna know is, what's it gonna look like?
Right.
We wanna know, does it have a second floor?
It's gonna be a, yeah, it's, it's an 18-foot structure, it does have a second floor for a loft, and it's a pre-built structure.
Okay.
And then you can get them to match with the, with the siding, which is gonna match our house.
Teddy league is gonna be matching.
And again, there are other ones on, in that area that are as tall, so-
Right.
But we have to be concerned, we have to ask the question, there's not gonna be any residential use in there, there's no running water, no electricity, nothing like that, okay?
Right, I would like to run electricity in there.
Because of the garage door, we would like to have them electric.
Oh, okay, alright.
But no, absolutely, no running water or anything like that.
People have built garages and then put apartments in them, okay?
Oh, no, no, no.
So that's why we're asking the question, when you, especially when you're asking for a larger garage. So I'm okay with it, like I said, there's several others right in that immediate area, so.
Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Pam will give you your instructions, and then we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is it 10 or 15 feet?
15.
So it's 15, but we've gotta, just clarify the other one, please.
930.
Alright, number 16, Appeal 3848 Ali, Arafat Ali, 40 West Old Farm Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 6-foot height variance for an existing 16-foot high shed pursuant to Section 194-107B2 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
David Vickery, representing Mr. Ali.
Okay.
Because you had me confused, because you're from Colesbury.
You gave yourself away, all right?
That's no problem, I got nothing to hide.
So my understanding is he didn't build this shed?
The house was a foreclosure, we bought two years ago, I just finished a renov-, extensive renovation and addition.
Okay.
The CEO's issued a couple of weeks ago, and the shed was non-compliant, so, we're here.
Okay, so there is a picture of it, but the bottom line is, he did not build it, he bought the property with this shed there.
The shed was the best part of the property when it started.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
By far.
And it is a tall structure, so we have to ask the question, you just heard, is there a second floor to it, is there-
There's a, about, um-
There's no residential use in here?
There's a, there's a scuttle hole and it's storage barn.
Okay.
That's why it's so high, the man that built it has two 8-foot levels.
How much room is there between the roof and the, the base of that scuttle?
Well, it's 16-foot and it's an 8-foot ceiling, so it's about 7-foot to the peak, but it's gambrel, it's, it's, a lot of it's crawl.
That's a rather complicated roofline, Dutch-
It is, and, and it's built on 16-inch steel beams.
Somebody had fun-
If you look at the picture, you see a reveal in the front, and the fellow that built it was a contractor, and he had some stuff left over, apparently, and that was a good footing for him.
And he played with that, he had fun building it.
What's the color of the house?
It's a brown, there are pictures that there included, I think you can see-
There are some pictures here, is the house the gray house, or whitish?
The house is the white house, property.
Okay, white house, okay.
The siding was left over from that house next door, when the man built the house for the neighbor, he had some siding and he put it on his shed.
Okay, I have to ask the question, there seems to be an awful lot of building materials there.
It's being cleaned up, a lot of, the blocks and some bricks are left over, and we're gonna use it for landscaping.
Okay.
Since that picture was taken, the front of it's cleaned up, and the intention is to finish, repair the soffit that's there, that's incomplete, and the front doors on it, they're plywood, do something to make them more aesthetically pleasing.
Okay, is there a second shed on the property? The survey shows.
No, there isn't.
Oh, yeah, there's one that's right next to a proposed addition?
It's been removed, it was removed during construction, well, it fell apart, and the, actually, the addition is, is almost in the place of where the shed was.
Yep, that's gone. I'll mark that gone.
We were hoping at some point to add a second shed for garbage pails, et cetera, near the front of the house, but that's a future item.
What is actually stored in here, is it?
Well, right now, as we're finishing up, I have some tools.
Okay.
And a one mower and, and some chairs.
Not motor vehicles or anything like that?
No, it's small.
Okay, it's stored.
It's made so you can put a drive, a ride-on mower in there, drive in and out the ramp.
That's not a motor vehicle, that's not-
No, there's no room for that.
Okay.
Well, we could put a motorcycle in it, actually, that would be a motor vehicle.
Yeah, you're getting technical there, yeah.
Well, I'm just here with you here.
Alright.
Honestly, that, and it would be a good place to put a motorcycle.
Yeah, it would be.
But he doesn't ride a motorcycle.
Rick, any other issues from what you saw? No, okay, so if he cleans up the building materials, okay, alright, motion for advertise?
Motion to advertise, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Pam will give you your instructions for the sign.
There's an advantage to being late on the agenda.
Never know.
You never, exactly, you don't, don't wish any, you know, anything bad on these four folks that are still here. Item number 17, Appeal 3849 Ralph, Arthur and Rosemary Ralph, 8 Old Fishkill Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, are requesting an 11-foot rear line variance for a proposed 12-foot by 16-foot shed and a 31-foot sideline variance for, into the I-84 buffer for an existing 12-foot by 12-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-17 and note 11 of the building or, of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, folks, you are going to remember this lot.
Yes.
We built, we allowed a house to get built on an undersized lot, do you remember?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes.
That had essentially four front yards, and they assured us, right?
Yes.
That, oh no, they wouldn't need any variances or whatever, and we even said to them, anything you were gonna need to do and want to do on this property, you were gonna need a variance. So you are now here because little did you know, you did know. I know, we, we understand.
The salesman, they sell you, they sell you a house, I can't even put a deck up because I don't have enough property.
Well, because it sounds like they also put up a bigger house than they told us they were gonna put up.
Well, we were unaware, okay, let me tell you.
We understand that.
They will sell you the Brooklyn Bridge without you even knowing it, they're shysters.
They also put the gas tank, the propane-
On your property.
On your town property.
There was a buried propane tank, yeah.
Buried propane tank, oh.
Okay, now they promised me they can't move it until it gets down to half, half full.
And we're at 70%.
So that means November, December, by the time I get down to-
Then the ground will be frozen?
Thank you.
I also had a problem with the well, these guys are great builders, I went around, I asked people how they were, they're good, they're the best in the area, they say, they come in, they use an existing well, I got mud for three months, I'm sucking mud out, it, it's got two holes in the casing, okay, they ruined the gas tank.
Ruined my appliances.
And then when I, when I built the shed, I come in, I got, I got the thing, they said I could do twelve by twelve, I did all the offsets, but there was a beautification act from eighty-four.
We were unaware of.
So I'm only seventy feet instead of a hundred feet from eighty-four.
Right.
But if you look, when the leaves are down, you can't even see my house from eighty-four.
You can very just see the sliver of the top as you was by.
And the back, the back property.
We knew this was going to happen.
Is road, side road is eighty-four.
We're in a hole. And I mean...
No, you really are, because again, you know.
Exactly. I mean, we're down.
You're dropped, the road goes down, we knew that.
They had this problem when they tried to build the house.
Yeah. See, the problem was, that became a, a sliver of property left over from when they were built from eighty-four back in the sixties.
Exactly. Yes, that we figure, and, and there was, there's contamination minute, miniscule, yeah, there's.
Water.
Carbon tetra chloride traces, okay? I've been going nuts.
Really?
You know, so.
I mean, I paid a lot of money for this house, I mean.
Oh, we, we understand. So let's just deal with what you're proposing to do here. So you're looking to add a deck.
Right.
And a twelve-foot by sixteen is not a large deck, so if you want to put a table and a couple of chairs.
Yeah, that's all I want.
That's what you're doing.
Do I have enough room? I mean, you know, every time.
And so you're putting the shed, is, how far away from the house is the shed?
It shows on the survey. I don't have it in front of me. It's all marked out.
Seventy feet from the boundary line on eighty-four.
Right, but, he marked it all out.
How much room did they give you? Is the house another, is it thirty feet away from the house?
I, I, he, he marked it all out. I don't have it in front of me. I should have brought my survey back.
It's pretty close to the house. That means the house is in the one-hundred-foot setback.
No, it's not. The house just makes the hundred and one feet, and then it, the shed is kind of like offset of the house.
Shed in the backyard.
Yeah. Is it, it's seventy feet from the boundary line, so that gives us about thirty feet from, it's setback, it's kind of like diagonal. It's not parallel, it's diagonal.
Oh, it's edge of pavement again. Yeah, okay. Not the property line.
Right, right.
I presume that's a hundred one point six is what they're referring to.
Exactly.
And I'm at seventy feet.
See the buried propane tank, does it?
Instead of a hundred one.
No, don't believe that. That's wrong. It's diagonal from the well. Do not believe that. It is diagonal from the well. The well is here, it's over here on the town property. I sit every night at dinner table, and I look at them diagonal.
You're not supposed to know it. It's buried.
Well, you know what the builder told me. He said, "Don't worry about it, I'll never see it."
Exactly.
That's like you said.
I'll never see it.
And if we ever go to sell it, we're going to be above its creek.
Believe me, we know, but, honestly, also said, we didn't want somebody to stop paying taxes on a, on buildable lot, so.
It's almost an acre of prop, I mean, less than an acre. Should be big, big enough for a house.
Well, it all depends on the size of the house. If they had built a smaller house, you wouldn't necessarily need some of the variance.
I wanted my three-car garage.
Oh, understood. I get it.
That's why he had to bump out, you lose a lot of space.
I want to get something out of this deal. My wife gets everything she wants.
She's got a parking space in that garage, I hope.
No, I don't. There's a tractor and my sons and the grill. No, in the wintertime, my daughter goes in. No, I'm not in there. I'm not in there. That's why I chuckled when you were talking about that. No, the tractor has a bay. Isn't that nice?
Get out of this one. Alright, folks.
And the other door in the wall.
According to the county records, it's supposed to be two acres of property.
No.
Yeah.
This is an undersized lot. We approved it as an?
This is two acres up here. You have two acres?
No.
I have nine point two acres. Nine point two.
No, I was...
Point nine two.
No, but again, this is...
Point nine two.
You can't go by the, these records.
If you remember, this lot was created when eighty-four was.
Yeah, but again.
And that was the argument they made to the board.
When we, we approved it as an undersized lot. Dutchess County's records are wrong.
Okay, so somebody's record is wrong.
Not the first time.
Because it says up here on the...
It's two-acre zone is what they mean.
The parcel access?
But the survey that shows.
Pam shows us that is, that it's a two-acre lot, but that's not accurate.
The certified survey shows the propane tank within the bounds, which it's not.
He probably just went by what they told him.
Yeah, this, okay.
Obviously, they need to correct some of these issues, so.
Okay, so motion to advertise, yeah.
Just understand, going forward in the future, if you're looking to do anything else on this lot, you're going to be severely restricted.
No. Well, let me ask you, suppose we want to do a pool?
No.
Above the ground pool? No. Are you kidding me?
We had, we really...
We, we wanted to put a restriction on this lot to help you understand it.
They were supposed to, weren't they? Were they supposed to report restrictions?
I thought we were told they couldn't, we couldn't require that.
I don't want a pool in there.
Because we didn't know what kind of requests would come in in the future, and we couldn't tie the hands of a future board.
Me and Jeter, we got a, I mean, there's a whole big lot to the, to the right of the house.
I'm just warning you, number one, recreation, a pool is recreation. It's not a mandatory kind of thing. It's not to keep debris out of your yard.
Before my approval.
No.
Yeah.
You're not going to build her a pool anyways, is that it?
There's a kiddie pool somewhere. Oh yeah, she's going to have to buy you membership in the club. I like that. Alright, motion to advertise.
So basically, you know, okay.
They never told us anything. We're already, I mean...
I understand. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Pam will give you your instructions to your sign. Can we, can we talk about how many signs they need?
Oh, I think two's enough.
They need one on eighty-four? No, they do not want to need one on eighty-four.
I think two's enough.
Oh my gosh, yes. I think one on, right, one on the corner where they did one last time, and one on the front of the property.
The two. Yes.
Yeah, she'll put the signs up, okay?
Thank you, guys.
No problem. We'll see you next month. No, that's fine.
You're going to need two signs.
Sorry you had that experience that you did, so.
I'll show you, I'll show you tomorrow.
Alright, and last but not least, item number eighteen, Appeal three eight five zero, Dema, Dyma, I don't want to say, Dema, okay. Richard and Catherine Dema, seventy-six Christine Court, Stormville, are requesting a thirteen-foot variance for a proposed above-ground pool pursuant, pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, so, good. So tell us what you're proposing to do.
We put an above-ground pool in the rear of our home, and I realize, I think, the thirteen-foot variance is not correct, because when I picked up the pool permit from the town, it said twenty-five feet, and later on I found out that I believe it's fifty feet because we have a road.
Yeah, I think, looking at your survey, you have a violation because the shed is over your property line at two locations. So I think we need to address that issue first before we go forward.
Yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, you have a shed over the property line in the back?
It's facing the road, you have to have more.
Yeah, I, we purchased the home six years ago. That shed was pre-existing, I think, from the original owner, not the second, we had a, we're the third owner.
So they have three floors.
It was never, I, you know, I was never addressed at our closing. I wasn't aware that it was over the line until I had this survey done for the proposed pool, so I don't know.
Is it movable?
Not easily, but yes. I simply answered yes.
I mean, we, we can't, this board can't leave a, a structure over a property line imposing on another property.
Okay, well, it's, well, it's on a road.
It's either got to come down, or it's got to get moved.
And then you'd need a variance for it also.
Yeah, well, depending on where he moves it to.
Correct, correct.
Well, where, okay, so, I'm assuming I can't go through with the pool yet until the shed is addressed?
Well, we're, we're going to deal with it simultaneously.
So the shed, it backs up to Hidden Acres Road. That's what it's crossing over.
So the question, what's the setback for that?
I know they said that the setback was fifty feet from the road, but you look at my house, my house is only forty-nine and a half feet when this was built, nineteen eighty-one. I don't have much property in the back. Most of my property is in the front of the home.
It's amazing how they stuck that in that little spot.
Crazy.
That's corner. Where the property line is, you're probably looking at five feet on either direction of my, you know, a wooded barrier separating the road from my yard.
So a reason why you can't move it from not behind the patio, but more behind the house, move it over up that way?
The, the what? The shed?
Yeah, so put the pool between the shed and the house. What about that location? Why can't you put the pool there?
Because that's a rather, um...
Doesn't not get enough sun?
In that location that you're suggesting, the pool would never get any sunlight.
That's, yeah, that wouldn't, it'd be awfully cold.
Yeah.
Not without taking down trees, and then, then you're making it more obvious to everybody, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm already going to have to do a lot of removal of vegetation to put it in where it is, but.
So, so your proposed pool cannot be moved close to your patio?
Could it be moved any closer?
Yes.
No, because I have a four-foot wall that is the border of the patio, and the pool company said that it needs the pool, since it's an above-ground pool, it needs to be four feet away from that brick wall, just so nobody can jump in the brick wall into the pool.
Oh, okay.
For safety reasons, and so that's where it is.
And we can't go on the side.
The playhouse is in the front yard with an eighteen-foot side yard. So we have to deal with the playset, too?
Man, why do they put houses up there?
How big is your playhouse swingset? I mean, is this a swingset, or is it a?
Well, it's, has two slides, it's got three swings, and it has a landing area with a little pitched roof on it.
Okay. Do you have an approximate dimension of the swingset?
I'm sorry, say again?
Do you have approximate dimension of the swingset?
Length, going from Christine Court to the rear of my property.
No problem.
You're talking...
No, I mean visually and everything.
Fifteen feet, probably, and then going from...
Well, again, maybe, maybe for the next...
Fifteen by ten.
Okay, so next time you'll have to have, bring some kind of dimensions or, or some kind of, because...
Well, we got to deal with the fact that the playset's in the front of the house. It doesn't belong in the front of the house. So are you proposing to keep it there?
I have nowhere to put it in the backyard. I mean, I'm going to, I'll, I'm going to have the pool on top of the patio, on top of the shed, on top of the playset.
Does your, your driveway accesses the two roads, or?
Yeah.
Is this a three-front yard thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
All my neighbors love my property.
This is an ugly lot. Not, not, it's just an ugly lot. I mean, I'm not saying trees or anything like that. I can't, I'm not commenting on that. It's just weird. Could you start all over again?
Oh, my, my wife loves this house and doesn't want to go anywhere.
Wow. I mean, the only thing, honestly, that's kind of saving you is the fact that it appears that one of your neighbors has a pool closer to the road than what you're proposing.
Well, we are bordered by roads on three sides.
That's the problem.
And then the house that we border property with, George Hogan just put a pool in last year, and he said, "I'll write whatever you want." He goes, "I don't care if you put a Ferris wheel in." He goes, "I'll come to your, your side to do whatever you need to do to get it done," because his kids are on my playset every day. We're going back and forth.
They would like a Ferris wheel?
I don't want that. Too much maintenance.
Oh, yeah.
Now, did your neighbor get the permission for the, permits for the pool, or?
He, yeah, because he mentioned to me a couple of names, the people that he had dealt with in East Fishkill, so he went through what he needed to go through.
Didn't need a variance. He didn't need a variance.
No.
Why?
Because he's a little bit further up.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, his house sits in, I can look.
If you go on your site visit and see this, this is a beautiful property, and everything is very, I happen to live on the streets.
Okay.
You know it well.
And it's beautifully maintained, and if you look at it, it's very, everything's appropriate where it is.
And so you're saying this makes sense?
It does, I mean...
Because it really, I mean, just given the layout on paper of the, where the house is in the lot.
And Hidden Acres Road in the back here is really accessed only two, three homes. It's not a public road. I mean, it is...
It's a cul-de-sac, is that what you're saying?
It's a one-eighty-nine road, you know, so.
Okay.
Not a cul-de-sac, but dead ends right into the rider's property.
Yeah, you go right into the rider's property at the end, and that's six hundred acres.
Alright, you're proposing a rectangular pool. Is that?
Oval.
Sorry, oval. Is that?
Above ground?
If it was, it's above ground, but if you were going to do round, would that actually be wider and closer to the road?
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
It's a twelve by twenty-four, so actually it gives me a little bit more room than an oval, than a round pool does.
Yeah, twelve by twenty-four is about this.
And I do think it gives, it can, keeps it in further.
It keeps it in further, that's what I'm thinking. It gives you more front, you know, length to it, but I think the round pool would actually be, end up being wider?
Yes, it would.
And so it'd be, end up closer to the road. So this is actually a better fit for the property.
And they have it at an angle. Is there a reason for an angle?
I don't know why they did it like that. It's going to be parallel to the patio wall.
Seems that would might buy you a couple of more feet, too.
Right.
I don't know why they, they drew the survey that way.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You want to be so tight, you have to.
Well, it just didn't make sense to me that they brought it closer at that one end.
Are you, do you have a fence up? Is, is everybody on the street going to be able to see you, or you're going to put up a fence, too?
We have a lot of vegetation, not old-grown trees, but a lot of plants that have been put in by previous owners over the years, so it's, there's really a natural barrier.
Okay, alright.
The thought of, after the first year of owning the pool, seeing what it looks like and see how it is during the summer with growth, that we might come back to you guys and put in just a small landing area, because we're not going to put a big deck in, because our patio is huge, so we don't really need.
Okay.
Anything other than just to really step into the pool.
Okay. Yeah, because that would be another issue then, if you're then going to look for a deck around the pool, so.
Yes.
Alright, so you got to deal with that shed that's going over the property line. That's...
So what are you proposing for the shed? That's...
Your options are to take it down or to move it in.
Or slide it in.
How far do I have to move it inside the line?
At a minimum on your property, but obviously, the, the more you can move it in, it reduces the amount of variance that you need. So that's why, if we're going to keep it, we have to give you another variance, we have to advertise for that variance. We need to know how far in you're going to move it, so we know how much of a variance you need.
Well, I definitely want to keep it, because that's where I put the lawnmower and tools.
Pam, when do you need to know? What's your deadline in terms of getting these notices out?
Um, September sixth.
September sixth.
Is your, is your property pinned there, so they could actually draw a string or a rope from one pin to the other?
Pinned in terms of, like, my survey?
Yeah.
No.
At those corners, no pins for you.
No. That corner.
Because he didn't give you...
Where the shed is, is my, really my only woods I have on my property.
Well, you know how far the house is from. I mean, you, you should be able to get close enough that if you said, that you could move it in, that we can, you could request a twenty-three-foot variance or something, and get it two feet in on the other side of your property line.
Well, no, now it only has to be ten feet.
Easiest thing for me is I could probably move that shed six feet up.
Yeah.
Fifteen feet in.
So you would need like a fourteen-foot variance.
Okay, so yeah, so we only have to, you, you don't need twenty-five feet anymore, you only need fifteen. So if you, if you're moving it in even just two feet in, then you only need a thirteen-foot variance.
And since you know how far the house is from your property line there.
Okay.
If you do that.
Measure it backwards.
And you, yeah, and then we could advertise that, as long as you're positive you can get it in.
Yeah, I can, because it, it could, where they must have dropped it off, there's, they cut the trees back, so I could honestly probably just move it six feet up.
Yeah.
So...
If it's two and a half, two-point-one feet over, if you can pull it, you know, four-point-one feet in, then we can advertise the thirteen-foot variance for you, and you go forward on that, too.
Okay, so...